Good day, everyone. Thank you for attending our Thursday, January 6th, 2023 regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting. I call our meeting to order and going to mix things up a little bit. Just going to start by having everybody state who they are and go from there. I'm Dan Larson, Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
We're looking for the selectmen to introduce themselves. And Andy, we have a new board clerk tonight, Hannah Walcott.
Okay.
I guess I'll go next. Mark O'Barron, Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Sorry.
Peter Casper, Board of Selectmen.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, Board of Selectmen.
And Gail Richmond is again feeling the pains of her injury and she will not be able to join us tonight. So with that said, and then of course, we have Andy Tierney, Town Manager. So if you could then please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, this thing.
This conference will now be recorded.
Donna, we lost Dan.
It looks, it looks like he accidentally signed off, so let's just give him a minute. Here he is. They've recently changed the interface for the go-to meeting and it's, it's a little bit of a challenge if you're not used to it. It's different.
I keep, it keeps dropping the second line of people. At any rate, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I believe we're just going to try to stick with it. We have quite a few people here, but I don't think we need to move anybody up.
Okay, great. Our next section then would be our public comment. Okay, and again, this section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. We request that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and their name in the chat box and you will be recognized.
Jean Tullamery would like to make a public comment. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you. Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Jean Tullamery, 110 Kenny Road. For tonight's meeting, I submitted a cover letter and three documents concerning the public works and the Raymond Brook watershed. The first document is the proposed building map created by Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates Incorporated and was found on the Town of Hebron webpage. This map has two obvious mistakes and one overlooks home. One, there is no house number 93 on Kenny Road. The house is number 95. Mistake two, the distance arrow on this map for the property number 95 is not aimed at the family's home or their drinking well, but it is aimed at an old outbuilding. This is the third time this property, which sits the closest to the proposed development, has been misrepresented or ignored. And last, on Church Street, there is a second overlooked house that will be negatively impacted by this project. These three simple errors support the overwhelming feeling that residents are unimportant and that nobody has even bothered to double-check the map for accuracy. The second official document is the Horton property purchase, February 26, 2019. Referencing the bottom half of this document, please explain scientifically how municipal and industrial development on small dome-shaped cornfields, surrounded on all sides by water, protects the wetlands or the water located downstream. The third document is dated May 10th, 2016. This is a letter from Michael O'Leary submitted to the Hebron Public Building Committee. The letter begins, "As you know, we now have preliminary plans for the construction of a new public works and transfer station. This is at the existing public works site," end quote. From here, his letter goes on to explain estimated costs, his meeting with Andrew Tierney, the ever-sourced land, and open spaces interest as well. This plan of reusing the existing site follows Mr. O'Leary's ideas on protecting open space and wetlands and on retaining, quote, "Hebron's rural flavor since 1997." A growing number of people feel the Raymond Brook watershed belongs in a proper land conservation program and we must now focus our efforts on rebuilding the public works at the old Colchester Road location with or without the ever-sourced land. An accident of any kind on the Raymond Brook watershed will be expensive, if not impossible, to fully rectify. The time has come for you to reconsider your plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Next up is Andrea Lutanzie.
Good evening and happy 2023 to everyone. Tonight, my public comment piggybacks on my public comment from the last Board of Selectmen meeting and that I had referenced Board, excuse me, Public Building Committee minutes going back to 2013 regarding the purchase of the Burnt Hill property and as it was specifically purchased with one goal, one of the goals in mind was to move the public works facility, the operations there. In, in the, another set of minutes, and this is from May 10th, 2016, and Jean just happened to reference this letter that I'm also going to reference. And the letter is from Michael Larry to Andy Tierney. And it references that preliminary plans for the construction of a new public works facility and transfer station at the existing site. It also talks about preliminary cost estimates from the architect and from the engineer. And that understandably, the site work at that particular site would increase costs, but it, that those would be incorporated into the overall plan. So there were also, so this discussion was happening and documented in the meetings of 2016. Also, in the, the minutes of 2016, the, the minutes also again reference the future prospect of the Department of Public Works being at the old Colchester site. So there seems to be some sort of a trail of conversation, documentation, records, plans being made, conversations happening in 2013, 2016 on several occasions regarding the preliminary plans that had been put in place. My question is, where are these plans? And why aren't these plans being incorporated in the PowerPoint presentation of the analysis or the alternative analysis of the different sites? Burnt Hill is mentioned there and there, the title for that is "Not Feasible." Old Colchester is mentioned there and the title is "Not Feasible." But at one point in time, these sites were feasible. And why aren't these plans currently being considered? Why are they being ignored? Why are they not part of the formal documentation? And at what point, what pivot point did plans change and who decided that the plans were going to change? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, yeah, next up is Kevin Tullamery.
Good evening, Chairman Larson and members of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for your time and your efforts tonight. I also submitted some documents to the Board of Selectmen that can be found on the agenda. Specifically, a letter from Mr. William Warzika dated December 17th, 2022 that clarifies some statements made at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. I would like to read a few comments directly from that letter by Mr. Warzika so that it's on the record and that you all are aware of these issues. The letter starts, quote, "Kevin and Mark, after hearing from you both regarding remarks by Selectman Dan Larson attributed to me during the December 15th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting regarding the siting of the proposed public works facility on Kenny Road, I felt compelled to respond in writing to set the record straight. You should know that I clearly stated during my opening and closing remarks to the Hebron Green Committee that the town is using poor judgment in locating the public works facility on Kenny Road and the facility should not be built in that location. The proposed land use, which includes a storage and handling of de-icing agents like road salt and liquid brine, pose a significant risk to surface and groundwater. That land use is not compatible at all with the state groundwater classification for the site and vicinity. Only if, after thoroughly evaluating all other alternative sites, the town acts contrary to these facts and the facility is ultimately sited on Kenny Road, there are several issues that need to be addressed. The most important consideration is to proactively install public water to potentially affected homes along Kenny Road and Millstream. It is the only alternative for supplying a permanent, safe supply of drinking waters to homeowners whose wells become polluted. Based on my longtime DEEP career enforcing the state's groundwater pollution laws and investigating road salt pollution problems, it is inevitable that surface and groundwater on and migrating off-site will be degraded by de-icing agents regardless of mitigative measures taken to combat pollution emanating from potential releases at the proposed site." End of quotes from Mr. Warzika. I hope that makes it clear to this committee and to the, all the other committees in town and the residents of Hebron that the efforts to site a public works facility at 17 Kenny Road are irresponsible and reckless and will be harmful to the environment and the drinking water of those surrounding the property. I hope the Board of Selectmen will recognize the extensive experience Mr. Warzika has with the state of Connecticut, 36 years in total, and his expertise specifically with the contamination of groundwater. This also leads directly into Connecticut's Potable Water Law, Connecticut General Statute 22A-471, which includes the qualification that, quote, "Pollution of groundwaters has occurred or can reasonably be expected to occur," end quote. The town will be held responsible and is responsible. And Mr. Warzika's statements make it clear that groundwater pollution can reasonably be expected to occur. And this is not from the, the salt storage facility building itself. This is also from the moving of salt on and off that property. All the trucks that come and go all across Hebron will start on that property and end on that property. They will cross wetlands. They will cross nearby a stormwater treatment pond, which have been proven to create, concentrate the groundwater pollution and cause runoff and groundwater contamination plumes. So I'm grateful to see that the Hebron Public Building Committee is offering tonight alternative concepts for the public works facility. I think that is a great step forward, but I really hope that the Board of Selectmen, the Public Building Committee can see that this location on Kenny Road is not the correct site, that these other concepts must be followed.
Okay, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
The Shortels have a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Donna. This is Greg Shortell, 22 Kenny Road. I just wanted to add or state that I support and endorse all the comments being made tonight by the previous speakers. Understanding the environmental and historical significance that 17 Kenny Road offers the Town of Hebron, I sincerely hope that the Board of Selectmen and the Building Committee consider other plans, plans B, whether it's Burnt Hill Park and/or refurbishing the, the old Colchester Road location. We've heard lots of information over the last several months in support of other options, other alternatives. And I just wanted to reiterate again tonight that I fully support looking at those other options, those other alternatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Do we have anything for good to know, special recognition? Andy?
We, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Appointments and resignations. We do have two people up. The thing is, I guess there has not been a meeting for these people to attend and we have not been able to contact the Chairman of that, of the planning and zoning. So if, if those two people are here, it would be great to hear from them. But I think we also would be remiss if we did not try to get some input from the, from that board chair. What other people's ideas are on that? If anybody has anything different or whatever, please speak up.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't see why that would be a prerequisite. I don't think we've done that previously with other. I mean, we just appointed two people to the Board of Ed last month and I don't recall that we asked the board chair for her feedback. So I'm not sure why we would do that in this instance. If we have two seats and two people, I'm not sure why we wouldn't just appoint them. Because we didn't do that for Board of Education.
As I say, I guess, I'm not sure. Have they been to meetings? You know, have they met with the town planner? I, these are all questions that I was kind of brought up that they, they have not. So it's up to whatever the body wants.
I can add to this if you want. It, it really is the, it is, I don't know if you can hear me. I don't, I don't know why it didn't happen at the Board of Ed or whether or not they were, you know, attended a meeting or not, but was sent to the political parties as well to, to recommend somebody. So none of that has happened with these two candidates. I think they're very good candidates, but I heard from both the town planner and the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission wishing that we follow the normal protocol, which is always, it was, and I don't know why we miss it on the school board, but they show up, attend the meeting, get the feel for it, have a conversation with the chairpersons, the members, and then the town planner, and then they write a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to approve. So that, that is the norm.
I, I mean, it may be the norm, but it, it wasn't followed last month for the Board of Education. And I mean, that, those were two seats that are critical seats for a board that's critical. So while I appreciate that we would like to follow protocol, I think in the future, we need to make extra certain that we follow this protocol every time, because I don't recall that this information was provided to us regarding the Board of Education. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could respond back, I totally agree with you, Tiffany. And this is one of the reasons I've reached out to both the entities for the Republicans and the Democratic town committees. That's also another norm is to have elected official, if they're going to step down, have a new person come in, that they write a letter, a recommendation, they endorse somebody as well as attend a meeting of that committee or have some sort of nod to the Board of Selectmen from the chairperson of that committee or the department head in this case, which would be the town planner.
I'm sorry, and actually, I do want to correct you. I mean, it says here in Terry McManus's letter that he did stop by the office of the town planner. So Terry did do that. So.
Yeah, he talked with, he did talk with the town planner. He just hadn't attended a meeting with the, the commission as a, as a possible candidate, is what I was told by the town planner. So it was a request from them, to be clear.
On a piggyback on what Tiffany said, you know, protocol or what we have done in the past, I guess that has some input into this, but what's the legal way of doing this? And do we have any competing candidates? Or is it just two people for two spots that are vacant? Because otherwise, why are we discussing this if there's nobody to choose from other than the two vacant spots? So anybody clarify that for me?
Andy?
Well, I can, I can give you my opinion. You know, these are all very important seats on any Board of Commissioners. So we're not, in no way would I be insulting anybody that's applying for it, but we just don't. The reason you do that type of a, a protocol is we're just not grabbing anybody that applies. We want somebody that is going to work well with the commission and find out, you know, their background. What, you know, it's just a feel-good thing and it's, it's always been done. I don't know why it didn't happen with the Board of Ed. Like I said, once again, I'll reach out to the, the entities from the committees, from the Republicans and the Democrats. It's always been that if an elected seat was open, they would weigh in on this. I haven't heard anything. I reached out when we did the, the town clerk and did get a letter for, for that or. So I think it's just, it's just kind of with COVID or when we went virtual, it's kind of, kind of not been that norm. But the chairman of Planning and Zoning reached out along with the town planner and asked that we do this. So I'm just reporting that to the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, it's my understanding that we've been struggling to find people for planning and zoning for some time and that these seats have been open. I mean, one seat is for an alternate seat. I see no reason why we couldn't appoint that this evening because it's an alternate member. It's not a regular member. It doesn't sound like there's a legal basis, as Mark alluded to, to stop us from doing these appointments. Um, you know, I think that if we're going to have this kind of protocol, then I want to see this kind of information fully supplemented every time. We have no way of going back and checking if all the Board of Ed candidates that were before us attended a meeting and met with the chairwoman of that board. So I, I don't see a reason to stop business from being conducted if we have two people for two seats. You know, perhaps an alternative is to appoint one as an alternate member and then we figure out the actual elected seat because that'll be up later this year. But I, again, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't move forward on this, especially not when one letter clearly says that they've met with the town planner. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand and respect that. I have, and very much respect the time of the folks that are on the line. But I also respect the desire of the chairman. I'm not looking to supersede that because of ultimately maybe some mistake, mistaken procedure was made and I clearly don't want to perpetuate the, the Board of Ed. I mean, that was really uncomfortable last time and I, I hope we never have to go through that process again because it wasn't, in my opinion, wasn't handled properly by the respective Republican Town Committee and that process for the Board of Ed seats. That was not something that we should have had to go through. And so I don't want to continue to perpetuate and go around what we, what the chairs would like us to do and what we've historically done. My vote's not going to change whether it's today or two weeks from now. However, if the chair, and if she has asked, I'm sorry, who's Natalie, right? Andy?
Natalie Wood, yes.
Natalie's asked for the opportunity to meet with the candidates or follow that normal process. I'm not really comfortable superseding her request. I don't think there's any reason to, other than the fact that we unfortunately will have wasted some time here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
One, one last comment, Dan?
Sure.
I, I agree with Tiffany. I don't see what, what'd stop us from going forward here. There's no competing people. Another thing I wanted to point out, I'd like to make, if we're just going by the chairman's recommendation, why even bother? Because we're just going to do what they say. So the chairman dictates who he wants on the board. That, that's not free and democratic. That's him giving us his, his or her opinion and we're rubber stamping it. So I'm not even necessarily in favor of that, to tell you the truth.
Okay. And as I say, I, I tried to, tried to find Natalie's number and was unable to. Because I wanted to question her also. I don't have a problem one way or another. And we do have two candidates. We have one that's for a regular seat and we have one that's, as Tiffany was stating, is an alternate. I'll go with whatever the body wants to do.
I, I think, um, you know, I think these two candidates are on the line and I think out of respect for their time, I think we should hear from them and hear their expertise and why they're interested in serving. That way their time isn't totally wasted. But again, I agree with Mark. And I'll just reiterate that, you know, in the future, if this is the protocol, it needs to be followed for everything and that needs to be provided to the selectmen in advance. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's, let's hear from our candidates and, you know, we have a Jason Boyce and Terry McManus. And I'm not sure if there was anybody who had a desire for which position. But Jason, you want to just give us a little bit of update on yourself and? You have to unmute. Yeah, there you go.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Cool. Well, yeah, thanks for having me on. I spoke to Matt a couple of weeks ago. Him and I had a conversation and he asked me to write a letter to Town Manager Tierney. So I guess I'll just, I'll give you a quick little background about me. I'll try not to bore you. But yeah, wanted to introduce myself as a town resident interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I grew up in Glastonbury, went to Georgetown University on a baseball scholarship. After that, I've lived in Hebron since 2006 and just really absolutely have fallen in love with the town. Employment-wise, I worked as a project manager for a custom home builder in Glastonbury for four years, as a foreman for a custom woodworking company in Bolton for six years. And I was a property agent for the Connecticut Department of Transportation in the Division of Rights of Way for eight years. We purchased and sold all necessary property rights in order to conduct state infrastructure projects. Did that for eight years and I've been a local real estate agent in Hebron here for over a year. I've also personally purchased, renovated and sold multifamily and single-family properties as investments since 2013. So I, in full disclosure, I don't pretend to be an expert on zoning regulations, but I want to be clear about that. But I do have quite a bit of experience with them, especially based on my time at the DOT and personally renovating properties. While at the Connecticut DOT, I secured over 30 variances based on property impacts to private property owners as a result of those government projects. And I also presented at over 15-town public informational meetings regarding private property impact as a result of those town or state projects. As I've gotten older, I'm now 41. My love for the Town of Hebron has just continued to grow and I've been beginning to think of ways to become involved at the town. So as someone with prior government regulatory and construction experience. So as someone with prior government regulatory and construction experience. I was hoping that I could help the town by serving on Planning and Zoning Commission. In, you know, some small part to help improve a community that I've, I've fallen in love with. So I'd be honored by the opportunity to serve and possibly play a small role. In, you know, future economic development and growth of Hebron while at the same time balancing. The historic charm and the conservation that defines the town.
Hey, thank you. Do we want to hear from Terry first and ask questions? Okay, Terry?
Good evening, everybody. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We all know each other and my letter to the, to Andy. Basically stated the reasons as to. Why I'm seeking a position on the commission. And it's part of an evolution of worrying about the town, participating in a number of different. Not participating, but attending a number of different board meetings. Different boards. I'm born in Albany, New York, raised my family in Wyoming. Spent some time in Houston, Texas, and I've been a resident of the town from 2006. During that decade, Houston, I spent about ten years overseas. I've seen a lot of the world. And I've seen a lot of Hebrew. I believe that I can add value. In a formal role than what I've been doing in the last sixteen years of attending meetings. Jason has a great deal of practical expertise. I have a little bit of philosophy expertise. And I guess I ran for office once and what I said is that. I'm not sure exactly where I'm going, but I'll guarantee you that I will work very hard. With any responsibility that you may see fit. To give to me. And with that. Thank you much.
Okay. Questions, anyone?
Well, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you both met with the town planner. So it sounds like that stuff was followed. You know, I know that one of these seats is for. Would be up for election this year, determines November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the other is an alternate position. I mean, I, I guess it's fair to ask. Do either one of the candidates have a preference? I mean, it, it, it's kind of helpful to hear from. The two of you rather than us deciding what you might prefer. Thank you.
Yes, Terry.
I'm more than willing to take the ultimate spot. Jason would want the appointed spot, the elected spot. I feel that the opportunity to assist in making decisions. Will, will be equal as long as I were to put the work in. So. Either one is fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
I'd have no objection to that. I was gonna say, I prefer a. Full-time spot, but would be happy with, you know, anything that you guys deemed. That could help out, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and, and listening to both of these candidates. You know, it's difficult to, to make a complete one hundred percent decision on somebody just listening to them. But I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with what I've seen in both of them and. That was a very sportsmanlike move, Mr. McManus, to say that you'd take that position. And you being a fellow baseball player, I'm sure you could appreciate sportsmanship. Where he would give you the nod to, to get in the game while he waits to be substituted in. I feel very comfortable voting for both of these guys myself.
Okay, Peter?
Uh, thank, thank you. And I think, I don't know, Jason, I did laugh when you said you were getting older, forty-one. But, uh, that's just for Mark and me to laugh about. But Terry, and thank you both very much. We have a very difficult time. In this town, getting enough people like you to volunteer. And Terry, I would say that. As I think about the public and all the meetings that I've been in the last ten years or so, you. Probably have the best attendance record of someone from, that isn't on a board or commission attending and bringing. Good comments and, and, and preparation and thoughtful. Comments about what we're doing and really engagement. And if everyone in, on our community were as engaged as you are currently. We would be much better for it. So the fact that you're willing to step up in an additional capacity, I think the town would be, be very fortunate. And obviously. Jason, your experience clearly aligns with, you know, what would probably be needed for, for that. So I, I appreciate that as well. But thank you both for stepping up. We don't have enough good people stepping up and the fact that you both want to do that. I, I just speaking for myself as a resident, thank you very much.
Okay. Just a quick question for Jason. Where do you do a lot of your real estate and do you think that would create any conflicts of interest?
Yeah, it's a fair question. We do, within about a forty-five minute radius of here. So I have some projects in Newington, one in Glastonbury. I own a duplex here in Hebron. And then I have a couple in Lebanon.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can't say never, right? I, I never like to guarantee never, but. I mean, I suppose if something does come up, that would be a conflict of interest. I could always recuse myself. But I, I don't foresee anything off the top of mind.
Okay. Thank you. Very honest and thank you. I think. These seats have sat vacant. For a while. I know I would have loved to have gotten a hold of Natalie. But. I, I think I agree. It's time to kind of get these people in these positions. So I think I, I would make them, you know, do the motion that move the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint. Jason Voice. As a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to run until November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And. So we'll vote on that one. And then we'll do the second one. All in favor? Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And then, thank you. And then move the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Terry McManus. As an alternate member to the, of the Planning and Zoning Commission to run. For a term to run until November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And again, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you both. And welcome aboard. You will be getting letters that you will have to be sworn in at the town clerk's office. I'm not sure how long that usually takes. That letters will go out, what, Andy, a week or so?
Yeah, we pretty much get it right.
Okay, so, thank you. And congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Uh, yes, Mark. You're on mute.
I, I was just, I'm, I'm happy, but it just transpired. I gave a thumbs up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next would be our town managers report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, it's been the holiday weeks. They've been a little bit short, but eventful. We had the storm, you know, coming on Friday, Christmas Eve. Low temperatures, so power was out. Power wasn't fully restored to all the members of residents of Hebron until about five o'clock. In the afternoon, Christmas Day. So there were some houses that. Were out of power for quite a while with those cold temperatures. So we dealt with that the best we could. We did open up warming and charging facilities at the firehouse, the Douglas Library and the town hall. We worked with the emergency management, the fire department and the public works department. And we, of course, worked with our liaison from Eversource and. Stayed in contact with them, letting them know what issues we had through the EOC. So it's just a, a different animal we deal with than years ago. They're gonna, you know, bring contractors in and evaluate and it takes them a little bit more time to. Get the power back on. Unfortunately, we had to deal with those temperatures. We finally, I'm pleased to announce, and I'm. Sorry, Gil Richmond's not here to comment, but we did hire a social worker for the senior center. The young woman, and she's going to start on June seventeenth. So I think those services were. Needed and I'll give Sharon a little bit of a break because Sharon's kind of been wearing dual hats for quite a while now down at the senior center. We're trying to wrap up the contract for the Stonecroft. I think we've, we've pretty much. We've been working on that for days. I think we finally got that. They were almost ready to sign that and then we can. Start moving forward with that project. That's the senior living down there by the senior center. We've also been working diligently with the building committee, Mr. Steiner, Donna from my office. Regarding the Douglas Library roof, RFP, that's pretty, pretty closely going out as well. And then also the facility study, which is now due once again for the town and school buildings. So. A lot of work's been going into getting those ready to send those out. Next up is a report that the sewer pump stations are moving forward. Another generator came in. They're working down on eighty-five. As people can see, the police have been down there assisting with traffic and. Moving the equipment around in there. So that project continues to move forward as well. It's that time of year where we're starting to work on the CIP. The department heads have submitted their requests. The onset before I start looking at it and just dealing with the department is, is a question of about three million dollars in total. So there'll be some conversations that are going to be had around that. And they're also starting the town department budgets that went out this week. So that'll be a two-week turnaround time. We'll get those in and we'll start going through those department by department and setting that up so we can come back to the selectmen with that. Wall Street sidewalks, we should have the retaining wall calculations back from DOT. Beginning of next week. So that way we can put that project out to bid as well and hopefully get that work on that. Sidewalk extension from Ram Road to the Ram High School done in spring or early summer. And then, of course, we've been working with the building committee and my office regarding the public works building as well. And that's all I have for activity.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted, during that, talking about the, this storm. And I'm gonna sadly screw up stuff because I don't have everybody's names. But I wanted to thank Donna and Andy. They came in, opened the town hall up for that warming center. On Christmas Eve day. Peter Starkell, and there was another younger lady, EMT. That opened up the firehouse and I think there was probably a couple of people in the back. I'm not sure who was at the library because when I swung by there, they hadn't opened up that warming center. But my, I just wanted to just give them my thanks for coming in Saturday. Christmas Eve morning and doing that for the town. And, and I know Andy was on the phone with Eversource and. And our emergency management team. Trying to get, you know, people straightened out. You know, a lot of damage, a lot of trees down. Literally throughout town. And a lot of, again, a lot of us is the ash trees that are just snapping. And it's going to be a problem for probably a year, a couple of years to come. But thank you. Our next would be our old business, our rescue plan, the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so there's, there's two parts to that. First off. We can go down the list of projects. Why don't we do that first if that's okay with the selectmen? And it's, it's kind of convoluted how Elaine. Put that together, but that's a true. Statement of what was spent and I, I want to kind of generalize a little bit so everybody can understand. So I just want to go down the list. And tell you what's in progress, what's been done and what's being worked on, if that, if that helps. And then we can get into the, the backup material if you want.
Okay.
So Donna has put the list up on the screen. Thank you, Donna. So it's listed in priority. So we'll go down the list and that priority. So the first police vehicle that's been purchased. Security measures at the town buildings, that's in process. We're dealing with the vendors on that, but that's not completed. The cert vehicle, he's actively looking to find a vehicle through a couple of different avenues, state surplus being one. The fire department marine has been purchased, is in service. The battery operated rescue tools has been purchased. The Martin Road Construction Engineering is active and, and being worked on. The senior center generator switch, that's still open. We did get a quote, but that hasn't moved forward yet. So we'll have to move forward on that. The Pendleton Drive to Library Pedestrian Bridge, that is active. We got the Steve Grant and we're working through that process. The skate park at Veterans, they're going to start dismantling what's there. In the next couple of weeks. So that's in progress. Along with the pickleball courts, they put a committee together and they're working on that actively. Also dealing with vendors for the playscape at Veterans. So that's active. They're dealing with the Gillian Hill School Playscape, they being Craig from Parks and Recs is dealing with them and sharing the vendors that. We are working with. I think he has a meeting set up with them next week. The Hammer Softball Field, that is moving forward at Vets. Construction Fire Company Number One Ambulance Bay Expansion actively being worked on with the On Call Architect. And the building committee. AHM HVAC system upgrade, tri-town split. We've been working on that RFP. That's ready to pretty much get sent out. Virtual meeting room conference equipment, we're working on that. We've met with a vendor. They're going to go on a field trip and look at another town that has that. To see if that's what's going to suit our needs. So we're actively working on that. Vandal-proof surveillance cameras at Veterans, we're working on that. The EV charging stations at the town office buildings, the senior center and up at the park have been installed. Peter House accessible ADA parking and ramp. The ramp has been put in. There's still more work that needs to be done with the parking area. Trail repairs are actively working on that. The dog park, that is still open and in committee as we speak. The Green Committee funding special projects, that's been funded and that's actively being worked on. Then I think we go to the next page. Approved by Town Attorney Board of Selectmen. So the old town hall building maintenance, there's two, there's two requests on that. The first one was approved. That's still open. The additional EV charging stations, locations to be determined, that's still open. Contribution towards energy, energy generators for Stonecroft Housing, that's actively being worked on. Cyber threat assessment and security measures, that's being worked on. Hebron Interface Human Services Food Pantry Support, that's been done. As I stated, the Wall Street sidewalk project is actively being worked on. The Witter Heating Assistance, we funded that. Sharon's actively working on that. The second police vehicle, they're working and ordering that. The active shooter training and police vehicle classroom toolkits, that's being worked on by Selectment Rivera. And then the WPCA Sewer System Improvements, that was a one-time allotment that has been also. Issued or approved and will be issuing that shortly. And then the rest, we're still waiting for approvals. So that's the list. That kind of generalizes so at least you could have a, a status of where these projects. Are standing, which ones are still open. But I think for as many as they are, we're kind of moving pretty good.
Andy, can I ask you a question? A, a, as I alluded to at the last meeting, based on the police accountability bill. We have a three-phase project which we need to put in place to be an accredited police department. Phase one is gonna be an estimated $20,000 to $25,000. And there's no exceptions to these. Is this something we could get into phase two? So we don't have to try to find the money somewhere else or make a special appropriation?
I'll run it by the Town Attorney, see if it meets, uh, meets the criteria for the ARPA funds, and then we can go from there if that's what the board desires.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just trying to save taxpayer money. It, it, this is something that, that we can't neglect. We have to do it, or we lose our, lose our police force. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if anybody else has any other questions.
I have a question. I have a question. Um, so where are we at in terms of total funds spent? So I know the total funding anticipated is this 2.8 million number. So where are we at in terms of funds who spent? But, you know, I'm trying to figure out what we have left based on what we've previously approved. I know that we've been in this freeze on approving other items. I argue that it's probably time to revisit that and consider some of these other projects, as Mark just said, for round two. But it would be helpful to know from a numbers perspective exactly where we're at with how much left we have to use of the ARPA funds.
Okay. So that's why I generalize this. Hopefully you, we could understand with so many of them dealing with the contractors being open and not having final costs. A lot of them are still estimates. I couldn't give you an accurate one. The only one I could give you an accurate one on are the ones that are completed and what was left over from those. But the other ones were estimates at the time, and until we get hard numbers, I wouldn't be able to have a, a real accurate number at this time. But we're not, we're not over by any means. We're under what was originally approved, but I don't know by how much until some of the other hard numbers get added to these projects.
I appreciate that, but I, I think that's gonna be helpful information, and I think we need to track that moving forward, because I certainly don't want us to get into a position where, as Mark said, there are certain things, you know, that would be helpful to purchase to bring us in alignment with state law and state statute. And if we run out because other projects run over, I, I just think, you know, I'm wondering if there's a way we can create some kind of, you know, I don't want to create extra work, but I think it would be helpful, I don't know if my board members agree, to know exactly what's been spent. So we need to have a clearer understanding, I do anyway, of what's been spent, what's planned to be spent before we start considering some other projects that are still on this list that have been in limbo. Thank you.
You know, I, I totally agree with you. So the, the backup information Elaine shared with you is actually what's been spent. So if we, if we total those up, that's the money that's been spent or, or budgeted, but the actual monies to be left until we have the hard numbers or cut the check, I, I won't have that information, but I definitely will have a number of what's been paid out and spent.
I was gonna say, on the last page, it's showing what's been encumbered. You know, what's, what's been spent, or what's been budgeted. And you can see some of the, some of the lines that have actually had, had payments put out, like the battery rescue tools on page one, the marine boat, that's actually showing what was actually spent on, on that item. And of course, it almost is too small to see. But that, that information will come as time goes on.
We can, we, we we, we can give a running report of what was actually spent, what's encumbered. So to give a perfect example of what I'm trying to explain, in order to buy this next state surplus, I'm hoping the board of second will approve. On, on the list that wasn't approved yet is $10,000 for a ACO vehicle. We actually found one for 5,600. So if that gets approved by the Board of Selectment, there's something we can add to the expenditure line and put, and have the somewhat of a balance left over. So that's what I'm, I'm trying to portray. I don't know if that helped.
Tiffany?
Um, you know, again, I, I think, um, I think we need more of these kinds of reports, especially as we move forward with these expenditures. But honestly, I was hoping to hear from Peter, if you wouldn't mind, because I know that we had all, you know, the idea to put the pause on spending the funds was his idea, and I'm I want to get a sense of where, you know, where he stands on, you know, do we start approving projects again? Do we do it in moderation? You know, how does the board feel about it, especially because we're being presented with emotion tonight, which I have no problem supporting. But if we are gonna open that door again, then there are other projects that we have not previously approved that I'd like to see information on. So I, I want to get a sense of where the board is at with that. Thanks.
Peter?
Oh, yeah, thank, thank you, Tiffany. Um, I, I think, um, what my concern is, is sort of what you're articulating, Tiffany, which is that we, as these projects develop, we have expenses that are beyond what was originally anticipated. We still want to move ahead with the project, and now we maybe have run out of money. So when Mark says, hey, let's not forget about the additional monies for the Police Accountability Act, compliance, no money, right? And so I guess I, I'm not still, I'm not comfortable approving additional projects for significant value. And, and again, this particular one on the screen now, and it's I'm looking for another used car. I don't know how you got anything for 5,600. So it sounds like a good deal. But I, I'm interested in knowing what the projects are, but I'm reluctant to approve any additional projects of significance, because we have still a lot of unknown final expenses in this first batch. I'm also sensitive to the fact that we have to meet a deadline as well, and that time can go by pretty quickly. And so I, I would say at this point, I would still recommend that we don't add any new projects until we get a better sense of if there's gonna be any overages on the existing projects that have a more significant cost associated with them. Now, again, this one here is not a significant cost, looks like a good deal, we should move forward. I'm not against that. And, and you know what Mark needs? Mark, excuse me, not Mark personally, but what he's suggesting, we need to account for the Police Accountability Act. We should be budgeting for whatever that is. We have to be in compliance there. So the, um, the concern I have is that we, we approve 100 or $200,000 purchase, and then some other projects go from 100 to 150, or from 150 to 250, and then we run out of money. Now we're looking for special appropriations and and we're dipping into funds that we, you know, that we, we basically overextended ourselves. So I'm still a little worried about that. It's early, but I think we ought to have a better accounting of any potential overages before we approve any additional significant projects. I guess it's the best way to summarize it, Tiffany, for me.
Is there a dollar amount you're thinking, like anything? Like, you know, like, is there a dollar amount we could work to? Because there's, there's a couple of projects and that are awaiting our approval that are significant, that are over 100,000. And I would agree, we need to be a little cautious on that. But is there a dollar amount, something and under that we could consider? Or I'm just trying to get a sense of the direction.
Yeah, no, I, I think, yeah, any, anything that we, like, like in something like this, I wouldn't say we need to wait for an accounting to agree to 5,600. I, I would think that, there's still plenty of money left. So I don't know if as a board, we want to say we'll entertain projects under $50,000 in nature. I just, again, don't want to run out of, I don't want to have 50, 100, or 50, $30,000 projects and then still run out of money. So I'm not against selective ones coming up if they're under a certain threshold. And, and again, that's just my opinion. I'm happy to look at them going forward. I don't want to preclude a project from being presented, but it clearly appears to me that we have, that we're accomplishing quite a bit. We have a lot in the, in the works. So to add more projects to effectively put them on hold, for the most part, because we have limited resources. You know, I don't think we're exposing ourselves too much, because we can't get to everything at the same time. But if you have a particular project that you think is worthy, or a member of the public, or as a project that they want to bring forward, I wouldn't be against looking at it and approving it, especially if it's, you know, a more reasonable amount of money, not something that's $100,000 or greater.
Yeah, I'd like to respond.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I agree with, I, I agree with Tiffany. It, it would be helpful to see how much money we spent if we anticipate spending more that we didn't foresee to finish a project. I think selecting projects, the, the key to that is their, their value, kind of triaging projects. What, what's the most beneficial to the town? What do we really need? What is a frill? What, what, what can help us offset increasing budgets? Because we have this money to offset dipping into taxpayers' pockets. I, I, I would go along with Peter and Tiffany. I, I would, I would like to see all the projects and discuss their merit and worth and decide what we're going to approve of. So I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we, we need to be a, a little more responsible about this and discuss it in greater detail.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I think, Mark, you're, you're, I think, I appreciate what you're saying, and sort of between you and Tiffany, I'm starting, I'm thinking, as, as I'm, you know, as I'm listening, I'm thinking that you might be right in the sense that maybe putting the whole thing on hold is not really the best thing to do. Maybe we should, to your point, Mark, almost look at the projects for their merit and, and, and approve their consideration, but not approve their expenditure. So saying, yes, that project is something we should be looking at, and we'll absolutely keep it on the shortlist. And so we have a sort of a waiting list of five or six things that we really want to consider, but we're not going to prove the dollars until we get a little more clarity on the existing expenditures. But we clearly have acknowledged that we don't want to dismiss their importance or put somebody off, thinking that maybe the money's not gonna be there. Maybe we should at least consider them as potential projects and put them on that shortlist for future consideration. And that may be sort of a compromise, so we don't, aren't sort of silent. So maybe, as I'm listening, maybe that's a way to go about it, Mark, so we're not ignoring the list that, you know, as Tiffany said before, maybe, you know, I, I got the feeling that you wanted to entertain some things, and I don't want to, you know, push people away either. So maybe it is, if we can somehow come to an agreement that we could consider them, vet them as, you know, and Andy has to go through the attorney, make sure they're agreeable, then put them on, you know, put them on the list, so they know that they're on the list, and we just have to get to them. That might be a reasonable compromise.
I like that. Tiffany, you, you feel comfortable with what Peter just?
Yeah, because I, I think, yeah, I think that's a happy medium, right? Because we've, we've approved what we've approved, and that's moving forward. But there's, you know, I still count several projects in here. You know, I know specifically we asked Code to go back and look at their proposal and bring something perhaps different, or, and, you know, I think Peter put it really well. I don't think we want to stop people from coming forward with these kinds of ideas. And I think maybe what it is, it's not round two, maybe we call it the shortlist, right? And these are the projects that we will entertain once we have a very clear definition of how much has been spent and how much we have. So I would definitely go along with that.
Yeah, approved projects for consideration. So these have been approved for consideration. They're on the list. And, and maybe, again, that's a compromise.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to be clear. It, it's a very easy accounting to put down what's been approved with these estimates. So I can have a column, this is what was approved with the number. But until we finish the project or buy that certain items, they could come in, I'm hoping 99% are gonna come in less than what we budgeted. I'm sure there may be a couple that are gonna come in more, but I, I can't give you an actual bottom line until we have some of those things, expenditures paid out. We, I can show you the list of what's been approved at the amount, which is very easy. And as Elaine already shared, this is what's been expended to today. What I'm trying to-
Correct, and I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking, both the marine boat came in $30 under, the, the rescue tools came in, a couple thousand under. Yeah, so you know, as the projects get done, that's when we actually have the actual dollars and cents. It's a similar, similar as our CIP or capital outlay. You know, we budget for certain amounts and you know, as in the event of CIP, monies that aren't expended or monies that are accrued through the sale of, of existing equipment are put back into the CIP. So it's kind of a moving target, so to speak. And everybody's hopefully done, you know, their best estimates as what the cost will be. I understand everybody's, you know, being nervous. I would agree on the 50,000. And again, prioritizing the purchases. You know, and we still are, are doing okay. I, I don't foresee us at this point in time going over the, the funds, because really, we've only really done the first round. So, um, and I also apologize, you, if you want to speak or something, you're just gonna have to speak up, because again, I've lost my screen to virtually everybody. So. Somebody want to comment?
Yeah, Peter Casper. Andy, do you, I know you had prepared some for us to consider, and I had sort of asked us to hold on. So do you have a list for next meeting of things that you had intended to bring before? Maybe we could start with that?
Absolutely. Tiffany hit it, Tiffany hit it right on the head. So you have Code that reduced their request and maybe came in with a different flavor. You have the small business assistance, we never really acted on. So there's a shortlist that we have in the packet today. It's, it's the ones that haven't been approved. Approved by Town Attorney, awaiting Board of Second Approval. Support, local small business, town center project, storage shed, Peter's House renovation, ACO vehicle, which we're hoping to do tonight. Code, Hebron Historic Society, Hebron Historic, their first one. We, we, we approved one, but they have a couple other ones in there where they want to put bathrooms and stuff in. So that's something you guys could look at. Is that the list you're referring to, Peter?
Yeah, yeah. So I want to, maybe if I could suggest to the balance of the board that we put this on next meeting's agenda and slow this down a little bit and look at some of these items again, and start having, and start opening the discussion back up, if that's agreeable. And then, because I know we have a full agenda, and I'm not ready to talk about these tonight. So at least I'm not personally. So if that's okay.
I, I completely agree, Peter, and we still have a lot to go tonight. So I would say, uh, great ideas. Let's, let's implement them, talk about them a little more and go forward with this. But let's, uh, let's at least vote on the, um, the ACO's vehicle. I, I, I could attest to all the calls that come in related to the Animal Control Officer, and how we haven't always had a vehicle that had a cage or was safe, or, so this is something we really need and I think it's time to step up and be professional in all aspects of our town. And to, to find a vehicle for that price, Andy, that runs and is safe and has the requirements that we need, a good job. So I, I would like to at least stress that tonight and vote on that.
Okay. Move the Hebron Board of Selectment approved funding from the ARPA funds for the purchase of a vehicle from the State of Connecticut surplus in the amount of $5,600 to be assigned to the Hebron Animal Control Officer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
You, Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay.
Thank you. Our next thing. Okay, Mr. Chairman, next is 8B Public Works Building Project Next Steps. The town manager will provide an overview of the proposed, received from BL Companies, Nathan L. Jacobson, for the public works facility to include plenary funding discussions with the goals of having the town manager come back at a future, near-future meeting with the proposal for how to fund the pre-referendum design and engineering services. So tonight we have three entities. So we have Tom Fenton from Nathan L. Jacobson. He has broken down his proposal, and I'm gonna have him explain why, because it's not just the public works facility. It's the utilities coming in from Johnny Horton Boulevard, the road and such. He'll, he'll briefly go through that and then open that up for discussions. He'll also cover BL's proposal. Then also, we have Todd Kellenback from DKA Advertising that's gonna do a, a presentation next on services that, this is a very large project for the town. We feel we need to engage the whole town. It's gonna affect the whole town. So I think he'll give us some ideas on conducting a survey with a, a committee and, and finalizing that and getting that out there. And then also some strategies on getting the information out to the total public, especially if we're gonna consider some alternatives. And then last but not least, we have the Public Building Committee on with Mel Lecter and Richard Steiner to follow up. and talk about possible alternatives, which was requested by the Board of Selectmen at a previous meeting. So without further ado, if the Board of Selectmen are okay, I'll turn it over to Tom Fenton, uh our consulting engineer from Nathan L. Jacobsons and Sons from Chester, Connecticut.
Thanks, Kennedy. Um can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, after my last experience here, we had a little problem that day, but um yeah, so Tom and Nathan Jacobson Associates and as you know, we've been I'm working on this project with the town for some time. Uh and we did develop a proposal for um design services that would carry the design of this project from the conceptual design plan. Um the concept that is now um proposed on the Horton Boulevard part on the Horton parcel um through to a um detailed design. Uh the purpose of that design would be um to specifically um define the proposed improvements. Bring it to a level of design that um uh and estimate could to be developed. Um include all the necessary um infrastructure site related improvements. Um design such that while this proposal wouldn't include acquiring permits, it would include the design of the project so that it met all permit requirements. So it would be level of design to fully understand um and detail the proposed improvements um and uh uh generate a um a comprehensive estimate um that wouldn't would for a budget for funding. So the proposal, um I just kind of just go through it kind of quickly and explain why we prepared it the way we did. You know, looking at this and it's it's a pretty um a pretty involved project. And um as I was going through it, I realized that it really warranted it breaking it down into a few different phases just because there are different elements to the project. So on the first page of the proposal, I allow outlined the various what I'm uh calling uh the tasks in the design proposal, um but the different elements. So the first one would be the extension of John Horton Boulevard um from the existing cul-de-sac at John Horton Boulevard part about seventeen hundred feet uh to Kenny Road. And that would include um uh the road design, uh plan and profile, grading, uh layout, um storm drainage, there would be two wetland culvert crossings. Um and then the extension of public utilities, water, sewer, power, gas, telecommunications and cable. The the second um component would be what I called supplementary public improvements. And in the concept plan, there was a roundabout and also a great lawn and a supplementary parking area. So I included that as a separate component in this uh breakdown because um that is not part of the public work site and is not necessary, but it has been included in the first phase of this concept plan. So I included that as a as a design element. Uh the third, the third part of the um component would be the design of public work site itself. And that would include um the public works pad, um the uh the site improvements for the garage and office, the salt shed, the equipment sto- uh storage building, all associated site improvements, which would be access right parking area sidewalks, utility connections on site, um including the um uh sewer pump station and industrial treatment systems for the vehicle wash water and the salt storage, which obviously are very important components of this project and discussed a lot. Um above ground, a few few own facilities, landscaping and any other associated amenities. And then the fourth component, wh- what I call the integrate project design, because we have these different elements. Um and we're going to be looking at stormwater management, for example, for each component. But we need to have an integrated plan that combines all these elements. So the fourth, the fourth uh task would be integrating the project design to create a complete design for the site, the road. Um and the supplementary improvements. And then the last uh task that I broke out was a what I call pre referendum task. So that would be um the cost estimates, the development of the cost estimates, public meetings, uh meetings with land use commissions, permitting agencies, you know, reviews to the extent that they were done. Um any any intera- and and public meetings, meetings with the Board of Selectmen, and we kind of made assumptions on the number of meetings and and um interactions with the town on that. But, you know, we felt it was that's going to be an important part of the whole of the whole program. Uh we next outlined, um so this proposal includes our services as a civil engineering and and the lead. A lead consultant for the design, um BL Companies as the architect would be has and has submitted a proposal to that town separately. So that would not be a part of our proposal. That's an independent proposal from BL. We would coordinate with them. They would be doing the building design. So there would be coordination there. But within the scope of our services is the landscape architect um for the landscaping, planting plans. Um we have incorporated services from a wetland scientist, although the wetlands have been flagged and checked. Um we would use a wetland scientist to uh recommend any buffer plantings or any mitigation measures and also um probably plantings for the stormwater basins based on uh the design of those. Um land surveying services would be minimal. We think there would be some. We would use the top topography uh previously developed for most of the site. Um that will be adequate for this level of design. We would um anticipate doing some ancillary survey in the area of the end of Horton Boulevard and the intersection with Kenny Road, because those areas were not surveyed or have been changed since the original survey was done. And then geotechnical investigations, borings will be required um for the culverts. So we included that um from wealthy geotechnical. So we listed our subconsultants that we would use for those. We then went through um a number of assumptions about um the design. Um and I I'm not going to go through all these. I could certainly address any questions. Basically, we outlined, you know, what has been done so far on the project in terms of design. Um and, you know, what our what our scope um is uh is based on um in in the lo- the level of design and and some of the assumptions on um how we would go, how we would uh how we developed our our estimate for the project. Again, if there are any questions, I can certainly um address those. Then I went down to the, we went out, uh outlined the detailed tasks for each phase. So task one is the extension of John Horton Boulevard. And then we listed a series of subtasks that we would, um we would propose and a generate and what drawings and um information we would generate for presentation to the town. You know, review with that with uh the town and utilities. The second would be similarly with the each phase. So again, with the supplementary improvements, um a series of uh design tasks, development of plans and review with the town. And then the third task is the public works facility itself, the site. Same thing, you know, develop um design methodology. Um what we did in this case would be working with BL companies in terms of citing where they're citing the buildings and make sure we have coordination there. And then develop all the uh onsite um uh infrastructure for that um review with the town. The fourth task, as I mentioned, would be integrating all these designs to create a comprehensive plan and comprehensive design. So there would be some overall plans, some phasing plans and um our overall stormwater pollution control plans. Again, submitting with the town and review. And then that fifth task would be the pre referendum task where we were um reviewing the project with the town, um land use ages, permitting agencies, uh public information meetings. And then um our last, uh last, we would, we would do this on an hourly rate basis. We listed our hourly rates, but we're giving a town a budget based on our hourly estimates to do all those tasks. So um our proposal breaks the um breaks the budget down into the five tasks, um our in our uh in-house expenses, our consultant expenses. And uh and um the total budget for for all those, all that work is a hundred seventy-five thousand um for the site engineering. And um, you know, we would not go above that amount without authorization from the town as being outside of the scope of work. Um and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Anyone? I just want to say thank you for all the work you've put into this. It looks pretty complete. That was very impressive. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
I guess we've all kind of answered the question before. If we if we find an alternative plan or an alternative site or a combination of sites, um a lot of this work wouldn't have to be duplicated, right?
Um, I would say that the a lot of this work is specific to this site. So, you know, with all the, all the improvements for the road, you know, you know, the extension of the utilities, the road, the connection to Kenny Road, the roundabout, the the great lawn, those are all unique to this site. Um the, you know, there might be some, there would be some elements of the public works facility site design that, you know, could be applicable to another site, but it would really depend on the specific site because you know, this happens to be a relatively flat site, a different site. Uh may have a lot of grading, may have, you know, other uh challenges that we would have to deal with. Um maybe acquire, you know, different stormwater treatment systems. So it wouldn't necess- this would not necessarily translate over to a different site if we if we went down the road with a with a detailed design on this site. Um much, you know, some of the work for the specific public works facility would, but much of the work under this overall proposal would not because it is unique to this site.
I I I guess it might be too much to ask, but percentage wise, is is even, is these even twenty-five percent of it transferable and seventy-five?
I would say less than twenty, you know, because I would say less than twenty-five percent. And and again, you know, these, some of these items, like take for example, the last part where we do the estimate and and uh, you know, all the public information meetings and the permitting, you know, meetings and review, you know, that's all work that would have to be done any, any, any project, but it, again, it's unique to this site. So another this site and another project requires a different, you know, a different cost estimate, a different analysis and a different presentation. So they're all tasks that have to be done on any site, except for the road extension and the the improvements that you need to cite. But they don't necessarily, they'd have to be done again, you know what I mean? If we if we actually did all this work on this site and then started another one, you know, a lot of those tasks are going to be have to not, or will would have to be done again.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
So Mark, uh this is Peter, the, so then really it's a, it's a uh, it's timing. I mean, you can't do all this until you know the site. Right? I mean, we can't do all this and then do it again.
That's correct.
So what's the time? I mean, what's the timeline on all this? Like if we were going ahead today, say the site was approved today, Tom, and what's sort of, do you have a feel for how long this takes?
Um, that's a good question. I mean, I think, you know, we would start the design and um, you know, for example, there is there is groundwater testing that we have to do now through the spring because we need to know, you know, we need to uh uh monitor seasonally high groundwater levels for design. We have to do the borings. Um there's some pre permitting activities. So, you know, I think we're we're um it's kind of hard to, not hard to give me, give me.
I don't want to hold to the timeline. I, yeah, no.
But you know, you're talking, I mean, you're talking probably, you know, six to nine months, maybe.
Yeah, no, just about for that person like me. I don't know all this. Is this, you know, six weeks or six months, right? So I just don't know. So six to nine months about, yeah, okay. No, clearly, clearly there's a lot of variables, but okay, so it's month, it's months, it's months and months. Okay, okay. I just, I just didn't know. So thank you.
Yeah.
Uh Tiffany?
Yeah, I mean, I I have the same questions as before. So this, um and this might not be a question for you, Tom, it might be for Andy. Um this hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, I, you know, I want clarity on how that's being funded. Um and it's my understanding that this amount would be the amount spent to bring forward a proposal that is the proposal for referendum if we decide to go in that direction. Do I understand that correctly?
So sure, Tiffany, I'll jump in if that's okay, Tom.
Yeah, sure.
So Nathan L. Jacobson's cost in this proposal is one seventy-five. Uh BL's proposal is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred, uh quick calculations, and my penmanship is like two hundred and forty-four thousand or two hundred and forty-five thousand, two forty-four eight. So the two forty, two hundred and forty-five thousand would be the total. If this were the board were to approve this, I would have to go back to the Board of Finance and ask to see how they want to fund this, whether it be a supplemental appropriation, and if it would be something probably to that amount, that might trigger a special town meeting vote. Um and then we would, we would take that either from the undoes the fund balance or we could put that into the um next year's budget to see if that gets approved through referendum. Uh which would then extend the timeline. Uh but that's, hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
But we shouldn't move forward. And this is, this is just for discussion. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this. So i- it, we're going to be presented with other options tonight. Say we decide on, you know, over time to bring something different to referendum. We don't want to spend this money and then start it again. Or are we spending this money knowing that we may have to spend it again?
Well, the proposal you have tonight was we were moving forward with the um Johnny Horton Kenny Road property as it was purchased for this um project, and we've been moving right along uh in that fashion. In order to get something to referendum, you would need a final design and a final cost. So the Board of Selectmen would have to decide if, okay, with all the information we have now, we're going to move forward with the proposed site off to Johnny Horton Boulevard or uh the selectmen have asked the building committee to take another look at previous properties and maybe come up with some suggestions for Plan B. So you would want to consider those. That's why we're not asking for any approvals tonight. Just wanted Tom to explain his proposal and um and one of the, one of the other parts tonight, we were asked for a uh pub, you know, a public uh publicity committee to try to, you know, get the actual information out there, help us with a a survey to get the whole town input because quite frankly, some of the other suggestions could possibly eliminate the transfer station. Um I'm not sure by doing that, if there'd be enough room, we'd have to take a look at that through the engineers, but that's one thing. And then there's other couple alternatives. So, yes, we would, we would want to make sure we we rule those other proposals out before we would try to spend this kind of money on on the Johnny Horton Ki- Kenny Road site.
Thank you.
Um, Tom, Tom, if you could, I don't, I don't want to belate that, but we've heard, you know, a few comments tonight. I try not to get too much into the weeds with the public comment, but if the chairman and the board is selecting, right, we do have uh you updated that map and you can explain, that map was produced on my request just to show the distances from the nearest properties, not so much the houses or the wells. But if you could show that revised map and explain that, and then also they keep, uh Mr. Wazika keeps talking about the GA designation uh map as well um on that property. If you could just explain those two things without getting too far into the weeds.
Okay, do you have the map um available?
Don, I had it up on the screen a minute ago.
Yeah, hang on one second. Let me just pull up my, okay. All right. Okay, so Don, yeah, first the area map. Okay, so so the purpose of this map was basically to show the the area around the proposed facility and uh distance this to the closest residence. So um we showed um, we showed distances to the closest two residents on Kenny Road and the closest residents on Church Street. Um or actually, I guess there's three residences on Kenny Road. It wasn't to show the distances to all the residences in the area. So um and with respect to the um ninety-three Kenny Road, we did, that was mislabeled. It should be ninety-five Kenny Road. I corrected that on the map. And the note that it was, the distance was to another building other than the house. You know, we just looked at the closest, the closest structure on the house and we were being conservative. So we showed the closest distance. The house is actually forty feet farther on that lot from the proposed facility. So we felt that was a conservative, conservative distance because um it was closer. And then the lot on uh Church Street, we showed the distance to the closest house, which is um uh ninety-nine, but we did not show to one oh nine because that's actually farther away. So again, we were just showing the closest was uh distance. It wasn't an oversight and we just picked you know, just pick certain lots to show distances to or or highlight. We were trying to represent the We were trying to represent the closest, the closest distance to some of the surrounding properties. So that was the intent of the map, Mandy, as you said, that was what you would request it.
And then we have the GA designation, the white map.
Yeah, so the GA designation, you know, just, just to kind of clarify, the GA designation is, is basically, it's, it's all the white area on that map. So it's really any area that's not specifically otherwise designated as a groundwater classification. So, you know, for, for example, for the town of Hebron, most of the town is in GA. There are just some very small areas that are, are other classifications. And, you know, you find that in surrounding towns and, and, you know, looking at many of the surrounding towns, you know, many of them have public works facilities or salt sheds that are located in the GA water classification, just because that is most of the area in the towns. So, you know, just as a, in those, those maps are available for a review on the DEP website.
Thank you, Tom.
Dan Larson, Tom, do you know if any of those towns in, in this area all under this GA designation have had any issues with salt sheds?
I do not know, I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. Andy, and you're checking with A, with DEP, D E E P? Have, has there been anything even, and quite literally, all the salt sheds in all the surrounding towns, as well as all the salt sheds here in Hebron are definitely older designed. Has there been any kind of a failure? Oh. He's not on, okay. Okay, I'm not sure Andy went. Any other questions for Tom?
Dan, excuse me, it's Donna, Andy just lost his internet. So, he's going to try to get back in, but for now, he is, he's not able to.
Well, I believe we had another guest speaker.
Yes, Todd, from DKA.
Good evening, all. Thank you for the opportunity to attend your Board of Selectmen meeting this evening. And do I have, Donna, do I have the opportunity to share my screen? If not, it's fine, I can just talk through brief presentation I have tonight.
I can, I can give you the presenter rights, sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
You should be seeing a message now.
Yeah, it's giving me that. Let's see, applications.
Sorry about that, I got knocked off.
I'd, I'd asked a question concerning with all the GA area, you know, in Hebron, around Hebron and, and all of the salt sheds, both town and state owned. I'd asked if there had been any issues with any of them, even concerned that they're all old designs.
I don't know if we have that answer, Tom, I don't think we asked that question.
Right, yeah. I agree.
I, I did talk to Ray Fargan up at DEP. He's gainfully employed with the Bureau and he says there's many salt storage facilities in the GA mapping area, just because that's, that's a lot of area in a lot of the towns we're discussing.
Okay. Okay, sir, continue please.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you see my screen with the big red field there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm here tonight to talk to you about public information strategies regarding the Public Works Building Project. My company is, is DKA, which is a combination of my partners in my last names. And we are a small company, five people based in Bloomfield, Connecticut. We've been in business since 1994. Generally, we're known as an advertising agency, but this is our scope of services. And I want to talk to you tonight about probably mostly the, the two top ones, research and planning and public relations and events as regards your, your project. We come to you by way of a recommendation from Kim Parsons Whitaker, who works with the State Department of Economic and Community Development and was formerly in a leadership position with Connecticut Main Street Organization, which I know Hebron is, is a member of. So these are some of the municipalities and, and public and quasi-public organizations that we work with currently. We are a state-approved contractor, on the state contract to provide media, marketing and public relations services for state agencies, municipalities and nonprofits that receive state funding. And specifically in regards to your project, I would also add that I, I live in Burlington, Connecticut, a community about the same size and characteristics as Hebron. So I have a lot of personal hands-on experience as the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission in Burlington, which is an appointed position, which I've served on for many years. So having had a couple of meetings with Andy so far, just to kind of get a background on the project, these are three strategies I wanted to talk about this evening as, as opportunities to really add some transparency and clarity among the public to this project, which again, based on the few public comments this, this evening seems to be warranted since a lot of planning and discussion has already occurred. So the first item would be a public online survey. We, we generally use an online tool called Survey Monkey, which many of you may be familiar, familiar with. And this, the purpose of this would be to determine residents' awareness of the project, along with their predominant or most pressing questions, concerns and needs for more information. I would work with, with Andy and whomever on the town you designate to kind of address the total scope of concerns. And again, put that into a, a format that people could weigh in on and rank, as well as add their own comment. And then we would, we would publicize that using town vehicles. So it would be publicized on the town website, any email and or text communications that you might use to communicate with your public, as well as, you know, if it could be sort of a ride along with, with mailings, if that occurs as well too, whether those are property tax bills or parks and rec type, type communications that may go out to the residents. We would do a press release as well to, to make it, to make it more publicly known and would use your, your social media channels as well to, to kind of publicize that the survey is available for, for a certain period of time and it's in regard to addressing the public concern regarding the Public Works Building Project. We would aggregate the results and analyze those from the survey and then produce a document of frequently asked questions or FAQs and then publicize that in the appropriate manners as well too. And then I, I know this might dovetail with what Tom may have had in one of his, his proposed strategies, but help you in conducting a public information meeting or meetings, such as putting together a panel of experts to kind of help the public get through their major concerns prior to a public referendum, which at this point, you know, is to be determined, but it looks like it's sometime in 2023. And with that, I would just kind of give it back over to the board for any questions that you might have.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
I have a question. So thank you for being here tonight. I'm also in this line of work as well as a Communications Director at the state, so I appreciate and understand all the tactics very well. But I guess my first question is, it was my understanding that we were looking into establishing a committee to work on this survey. Are we not moving in that direction? Because your presentation made it sound as though you would be working directly with Andy and I want to make sure we don't lose that element of townspeople participation.
I did not mean to imply that whatsoever. Andy's the only person I've talked to so far, so certainly we, I would work and interface with whatever group you put together as a steering committee or otherwise, to make sure that we, we have appropriate input from town representatives.
And then I had mentioned that in our interview that we would be working with a selected committee approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Anyone else? Peter, Mark? I have a quick question.
Yeah, Dan.
We've done.
You want to go, Dan, I'll wait.
Okay.
Dan, you go first, you started, I have something after Mark.
Oh, okay. We've had Survey Monkey surveys before. One of the questions is, we, we've had a couple of them where people are saying, oh yeah, I, I filled out the survey 10 times type thing. How, how can you effectively guard against that? So when people do these questionnaires, they're not, you know, flooding, you know, the results or tainting the results by numerous posts?
Yeah, there is a good question, Dan. There is a setting in Survey Monkey that it will recognize the person's URL or domain name address, so they can only take the survey once. So we can check that box, which means that it will recognize their computer address and will shut them down if they completed it and try to come back another time.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
My turn. I'm certainly not an expert on any of this, so I would defer to Tiffany because she's a professional when it comes to these things. But I, I, I'm, not that I'm concerned, but I, I think the committee is an integral part of helping formulate the questions that need to go out. And I think that group needs to be represented by very diverse individuals from different aspects of thought in town. So how do you incorporate working with the committee into helping get this message out and getting the questions answered in the survey? Will you be directly involved in helping comprise the survey? And Tiffany, is that part of what public relations do there? They participate in the survey creation and its implementation? So I'm just wondering if, if that seems like it would be the first step. So could you guys, you know, first our guest responding, Tiffany, if you have some information on that, I'd like you to share that too.
Okay, I'll speak first and, and, and yes, I, I completely agree with the direction and thought that you're putting behind getting a, you know, a committee together or a, a number of representatives who can offer opinions. Just in our, our experience, we are working currently with a four-town group, for example, on, on a regional tourism, tourism branding and marketing campaign that represents the towns of Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield and Tolland and all of their various town representatives to try and get some, you know, coalescence and, and agreement on opinions to move forward on that. We've done this in many municipalities we've worked with on branding projects, as well as vetting public issues such as consolidating and building schools, things of that nature. So we're very much familiar with working with a diverse group that may have varied opinions and trying to build again, some, some, some agreement and coalescence before we move forward.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add, Mark, thank you and thank you, Todd, I agree with you completely. I, I think it all comes down to the language, right? And I think as communicators, and I know Todd knows this, you know, it's, it's going to be, I think, a challenge to, to find that common language where no one, you know, special interest group or group of people feels as though the questions are being planted. So in my experience, that requires a lot of listening, it requires a lot of neutral language. And it may be that we need, you know, several more than just five questions to really get at the heart of what, how people feel about the topic. So I think Todd's approach is right on, and I think again, you know, it's all in the details and it's all in the language of how, you know, how we get that coalition together to agree on a path forward.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to maybe linger on that a little bit to make sure I understand where you're going with this, Tiffany. So, and I have a question for Todd too, but maybe this is part of it. So yeah, my concern would be that we, at the end of the day, this committee is diverse and representative of our community, but also is, is choosing to be involved to, with the mindset of collaboration and, and coming to a common ground and not just an opportunity to sort of protect their own interests or follow their own interests. So how do we go about making sure that we vet the, these folks on the committee? So we make sure we get that proper representation, but at the same time, get people that have the willingness to work through a common goal, knowing that, you know, there's some work that has to, you know, to go into it. So it's not, we don't want to have everyone just come on and agree. But the point is that they're willing, how do you sort of vet that out? Otherwise, it sort of becomes chaos. Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, so I, you know, I would, if we're forming a committee as a, as a town body, you know, I, I think I'd look for guidance to what we've done previously, you know, we agree on a set number of individuals, right? Because I think what you don't want is a 20 or 30-person committee. I'll just be frank, I don't think that's going to get us anywhere. So I'm glad we're in agreement on that. But I think we pick a number and I think we treat, you know, formulating this committee as we would treat appointing people to positions, we ask questions, we, you know, try to ascertain as best as we can in a public meeting, you know, not where they stand on a particular issue, but why are they interested in serving on this committee? And so I think, I think as long as we have some individuals whose properties will be impacted by this, because I think that perspective is important and we have other perspectives that might be in favor and some that are in the middle, that's hard to ascertain, but if we can try to find, you know, some happy medium there with that type of representation, you know, I think we'd be headed in the right direction. Certainly I defer to Todd, who's, you know, in the midst of pulling together a group like this right now.
So, so, so Todd and Tiffany, would we be the determiners of who's on this committee? Would we, as the selectmen get together and take this list and narrow it down to who's going to be on it?
I, I think we'd have to, yeah.
Oh yeah, I think you're right, Mark, because we, because we're representing ultimately the outcome, right? And so we have the ultimate responsibility for the outcome, so we should be part of that process with guidance from somebody like Todd. So if, if I could sort of continue with a question for Todd, I mean, this is really good. But, and Todd, I'm just wondering, are you able to, and I know that these are very long, complex sort of engagements, but are you able to just provide some insight a little bit as what we can expect? When I think of like you mentioned consolidation of schools, I would imagine that's very contentious and very difficult to sort of work through. So is, in this project, I mean, it starts to feel the same way. There's a lot of, you know, people on both sides, whether they're concerned about the expense or the location, or there's a lot of issues that are really important. So how, can you give us some perspective of a real life example of sort of how we go down that path? And, you know, I'm not looking for you to get into the weeds, but just maybe some to help us get a better idea of the road that we're going to be traveling here.
Yeah, I, I'll give you a couple of really quick examples that I think have some relevance to this, maybe on a different issue and a different scale, but as Tiffany points out, it's going to be in some, in some cases, your projects, the, the pain points are going to be related to whose property is impacted, correct? Based on the location of where you build this facility. So you're going to deal with the NIMBY syndrome, the not in my backyard among a certain group of people. Some of the experience that we've had on, on one, on one level, for example, we've worked for many years with the Hartford Parking Authority, where we represent 16 different neighborhood revitalization zones, each who have different concerns. If you live near Hartford Hospital, for example, people coming to visit patients are blocking your driveway and, and yet people have to park on the streets with residential parking permits to be able to, to, to have access to their homes and their cars. If you live in a different area of Hartford, for example, the, the North End, where the entertainment district exists, people come in at night, they, they block driveways, they, you know, they do certain things on property that aren't appropriate. So the H neighborhood had a different set of concerns we had to address. And in that case, we were able to go back and pinpoint those objectives and, and issues and address those individually. In the town of Mansfield, a whole different situation. In, in terms of, that's where the school building project and the consolidation was occurring. Again, taking three very disparate located elementary schools and combining them into one. So kid, you know, parents had very, you know, real concerns about how long was my kid going to be on the bus to get to this new school and what was the culture going to be, et cetera. So again, every project has its own set of circumstances and concerns that we would have to vet out. And in this case, I would certainly follow your lead because you've been, as I've said before, you've spent a lot of time planning and discussing this up to this point. But again, it's going to come down to, you know, determining the appropriate location, the appropriate scale. The issue is known, the solution is kind of in flux right now, and that's really the goal. I mean, the end goal is to get to some point where a decision can be made on a solution, correct? And that is to, that only comes from really identifying, prioritizing the issues and concerns to be able to address those to get toward that solution. So it's a process. I can't really put a timeframe on it. I can kind of work backwards from, you know, the notion that you'd like to get something done in 2023, and that's kind of why we're here tonight, talking about what the starting point might be and what the strategies might look like.
Dan Larson here again. We're lucky. We've got, you know, an extremely good building committee who's actually done a lot of work. I've actually done some work on different alternate ideas and some of the pluses and minuses of those. And I think it's very important. I know, as I say, the building committee has done a lot of work also on this. Apparently, even though we haven't talked, apparently our ideas are fairly similar. You know, but I think it's important also that, you know, the residents of the town know that when they pick a site, what the advantages and disadvantages are. Because they're numerous. You know, some areas, in fact, actually, there's only really one area in town that actually has, you know, quote-unquote, city water. You know, so that becomes a talking point. There's only one area in town that has sewers, which is a talking point. You know, there are pluses and minuses to all of the options. And I don't know if they're planning on talking tonight at all or not. But, you know, they've also got a lot of work. So I would hope that any committee that actually gets formulated, that, you know, these people play a pivotal role, at least in the the background information or, you know, some of the mechanical aspects of, you know, different locations. Seeing our building, yes.
Once we finish up, Dan, the building committee will be going.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, it's Tiffany, if I can just, just a couple of super quick things, because I know it's getting late. So I think first and foremost, obviously, I think we're going to have to understand cost, right, of these services? Because I think, you know, as a town, we need to be mindful of the use of our resources. I also would like to ask Andy if you could look into if we've ever used the services of a PR firm before for a one-issue type of thing? Because certainly I think there's a fair argument to be had that to hire a firm for one project may not be the best use of funds, because I would argue that there's probably a need for a part-time communications person to be with the town as it is, because a lot of municipalities have someone in that role. It's a specialized role, as Todd knows, and it requires, you know, a certain amount of training. But it would be helpful to understand if we've ever done something like this before. And I think as we get closer to formulating a committee, which I would argue should become a priority at this point. If that's what this board agrees we need to do, then we need to start soliciting and getting, you know, names in and start formulating this committee to do this survey. I think we need to understand cost, and then I want to understand from a historical perspective if this has been done before. Thank you.
I guess from my perspective, Tiffany, to answer the question on cost, my I guess my thought on tonight's meeting was to kind of identify three potential strategies that I thought would be appropriate. If in fact you agree with those, I can certainly cross those out. My firm charges based on taking our hourly rate, which in full disclosure is $125, times the amount of hours I can figure out for each of those phases and coming up with an estimate. If you asked me tonight and I said we would, you know, I might, I might think, you know, three strategies, there's probably an aggregate of a week's time on each of those. So you're talking about 40 hours times three times 125. You're talking about about $15,000 from, if you want a number tonight. And again, I, you know, we would, we would work specifically on this project. That cost is not based on helping you with other types of PR and communications you might need for other aspects of the town. If you wanted to hire us, and on that basis, again, we would, again, look at the scope of work and be able to put a cost based on that scope of work. So that's what I can add to this discussion at this point.
Sure. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It was more.
Yeah, I just, I thought you'd want to know. I mean, I've seen a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers come up tonight on ARPA funding and other things. And, you know, and certainly associated with this project. So I wanted to give you sort of a reference point on how we work and how we charge.
Andy, I think she had asked also if we've ever done a PR firm before.
Yeah, I heard her. I apologize if that sounded like I didn't answer. I don't have that answer tonight. I'd have to
Oh, okay.
Look into that. But I will get that answer. I don't know that we have, but I want to look into that and look at the projects and, you know, do some research before I respond. As of right off the top of my head, I'm not sure we have, but I'm not sure that's the correct answer either.
Andy, can you check to see if this meets the ARPA requirements too?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what you were implying, weren't you, Tiffany, a little bit there?
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful to know. I'd be surprised if that would meet the threshold of ARPA funding, but you never know. I mean, my main point is just that, you know, I'll be frank, I think that there's an overall need for a part-time role in the town to handle communications, because I think a lot is asked of Andy and his team. And I think they do a great job. And I think, you know, as someone who works in the field, and I feel like Todd would probably agree, there's enough work to be done in that arena that would warrant some type of part-time or 15-hour position. And so I guess I just want to be good stewards of the funds that we have and make sure that what we spend is going to benefit in the long term. So, but I say, you know, if we're checking other projects, we might as well throw this one in and see what the town attorney says.
Got it.
And I think it would be nice, I don't know, did you have a cost breakdown or your rate schedule in your documentation? Mr. Kalavich?
No, I just, I just basically alluded to our hourly rate is 125. And then again, we apply that and produce estimates based on agreed scope of work. So I proposed a scope of work this evening. Just giving you a really ballpark round number estimate on what I think it will be. But, yeah, hopefully that's, will help you compare with other groups if you want to talk to them as well, too. Again, it's all based on, it's all time calculation. It's all, everything that we do is kind of between this point and this point in my head. So.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that. It's just, you know, first time I know that I've been involved in this kind of thing. And quite literally, have got no resources to draw from to get any kind of an idea as to, you know, what to expect. I just know that we have done, as I said, some Survey Monkey things in the past. And, you know, we've had people, you know, bragging about how, you know, oh, I did it XYZ amount of times, which made you wonder, okay, how accurate are the results then? You know.
There are also things, if that's a concern, Dan, there are also ways that we have to kind of make it mandatory that people actually answer certain questions and provide information to move forward. I don't want to make it really restrictive, because I don't think that's the way to get the most amount of participation. But to your concern, we can avoid scams as best as possible with that particular tool. I'm not wedded to Survey Monkey either. We can certainly use another method. But that, that has been a very valuable tool in some other projects we've worked with to at least have real-time access to the answers as they come in. I can, we can look at it every day and any day if we want to, to see how this thing is trending. And always, you know, kind of shift on the fly if we find something isn't, isn't going in the direction we thought it would be.
And I think, Dan, when you think about it, there's always going to be some sort of defect rate in any sort of, any sort of project like this. So it's really, you know, if we have a relative high degree of confidence that it's representative of the public's opinion, and we can gather enough information, it's probably as close as we're going to be. It won't be 100%. You know, some people obviously will try to work around the requirements and get every relative they have to, you know, say the same thing over and over. But again, when you do surveys, you can sort of ferret some of that out. And generally speaking, at the end of the day, there's enough responses that allow for us to consider it credible data, credible information, which we can then take action on. So, and Survey Monkey is, yeah. I've used it before, we've used it before corporately. It's a good tool. And I don't know that any other tool would provide you 100% guarantee. But that's why, I guess that goes back to why, and I think I probably brought up originally, that we should talk to somebody like Todd to make sure that we have every degree of confidence that we've done everything possible to make it collaborative. We've structured the questions correctly, and we've assessed the data and the responses the best way that we can. And we are not, well, Tiffany's an expert, but the rest of us aren't experts. So drawing in expertise in the outside to make the public feel that we've done everything possible for it to be fair and collaborative is just, I think, a good use of money and time and recognizing and respecting the public. So, yeah, I think it's, you know, I think it's a good point, but I don't think it's something that I would worry too much about, you know, and with some professional oversight that we'll have and a professional tool.
And I will add too, that we can build in some defaults. So we can have a paper version available for those that may not have internet or computer access. We can translate to Spanish and any other language you think is appropriate. If in fact, if in fact, we want to make sure we're inclusive in terms of those that don't have fluency in English. And, you know, add that on as well, too, if you'd like. And I would include that in my estimate, if you want to have those additional accommodations.
Great. So if we move, if we move forward with your, with your company, is there, is there a timing issue with you? Are you, you know, saying, hey, we love to help the town of Hebron, but it's going to be six months before we can take on a project? Is there anything like that that we need to be thinking about?
No, we have no
You're able to.
No issues with scheduling at this point.
Okay. And I guess one more, if I may, do you want the time to, I, you know, I'll just speak for myself, but I'm interested in exploring this concept more. And I think that we need it. Do you want the time to think through an estimate? And or you, I mean, obviously, you were very nice to provide us some specifics, but you obviously weren't prepared to do that. Do you want any additional time and thought to put forward something more specific with the time, with the amount of time that the project would entail? So I know we sort of asked you to throw a number out, but do you need more time to do that? And do you want more time to do that?
Based on the knowledge I have right now, I would probably commit to around what I voiced. You know, mostly, if you guys want to fine-tune a scope of work or a request for a proposal, I can respond to that as well, too. My thought was to have this discussion, and if I miss something, like, yeah, you had three things, but here's one thing that we really think we need that you didn't address. I would add that in as well, too. But again, this was kind of a sequential process to say, hey, what are the concerns? Let's prioritize those. Let's address those and answer those with what we call FAQs. And then let's just prepare the public to have a personal discussion before a referendum, so that as much discussion is held in advance that gets you to, you know, obviously, there's a desired goal to get to from point A to point B on a resolution on this issue. The timeframe is unknown, but at this point, it's going to resolve itself one way or another with that referendum. So I think we're going to build, we're going to build toward that, and you're only going to schedule that when you feel you're ready. So we're going to be part of that process to making, you know, to making sure that we take the appropriate steps to get you there.
Thank you.
I mean, it can't go on forever. I will say, we have to put.
It's been 10 years. Let's go another 10. Maybe, maybe, Mr. Chairman, we should move to the building. I don't know if that's next on the agenda, but like a nice segue there. And thank Todd for what he's brought to the meeting tonight. It's very helpful. I've learned a bunch, and you were very concise and articulate in your presentation, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I, we would very much enjoy the opportunity to work with you. I'll probably take my leave now. But again, best of luck. And Andrew and Dory have my contact information. Feel free to contact me at any time with any additional questions, and we'll go from here.
Thank you, Todd. I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you.
And just, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So just, just in clarification, so we always do a first glance. So Todd sent us that proposal. I wanted you to meet with him and talk with him. I think Selectment, Peter Casper asked me to bring a firm in. That's what I did. Now, if the Board of Selectmen want me to move forward with getting a, you know, a proposal from him, I can do that. But I just want to make sure that you guys understood the structure of why I brought him in here and why he didn't have a proposal ready for tonight.
Okay, no, that's, yeah.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Yeah, let's, let's decide to move forward. We clearly need the help. We want to make sure we get the proper information out. We do it across the entire community. We welcome the entire community to participate in the process. And I don't know how else we would do it without some assistance. So I'm with you, Mark. I think we should just ask Andy to continue to move forward and get something more formal, so we're at least ready. And we keep this project moving.
I think that's fine, but I still want an answer to my question before I decide how well I'll support that regarding the historical nature of hiring a firm. And then the only other thing I would add to that is that if we are going to move forward and see a proposal, then I think we have to start moving forward on a committee. And so I don't know how we'd like to approach doing that, but I think we need to keep that as an agenda item, because we are going to have to put people on this committee and start that work. Thank you.
Exactly right. Yeah, we got to keep everything moving. I like that. That's fine. That's fine with me. Do you want to not, Tiffany, just to make sure I understand, because I was sort of saying, hey, we should, you know, at least get the formal proposal. Do you then want to not discuss the formal proposal until you have the answer to your first question?
That'd be preferable. I'd like to understand the historical significance of it. Yeah.
Okay.
Not that we can't, you know, get a number to work with. I don't want to stop progress. I personally would not be ready to commit to a proposal until I had some answers to those questions that I asked tonight.
Yeah, why don't we get a proposal and, like Tiffany said, not commit until we answer.
Oh, that's what I mean. No, I'm not getting a proposal. I don't mean to agree to, I don't mean to.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, once you have the answers and we get the proposal, then we can stir it up and vote.
Right.
Okay. We're on the same page.
Yeah, we are.
So I think that's your answer, Dan, Andy, to move forward, to get that proposal, just so that we have that in our hands as well.
Okay. That will do.
Okay.
Now we have Mel and Richard Steiner from the Building Committee responding to a request from the Board of Selectmen to go back and look at the sites or other alternatives. So they got an update from their findings.
Okay. Mel or?
This is Mel Lecter. I'm here along with Richard Steiner. And we're going to kind of break this into two pieces, and it will not be as long as anything you've sat through tonight. But we are open to questions at any time, and you don't have to wait till we finish just, you know, speak right up. And if there are questions, we will address them. I'm going to start by just, you know, giving you some, some highlights where, for instance, we're here tonight because in your November, one of your November meetings, you gave us the to-do to go out and look for a Plan B. You had mentioned review the locations we've looked at, look for new locations, kind of think out of the box if we could. And so we've been very busy for the last six, seven weeks. And we've come back with not only a concept for a Plan B, but we've come back with a concept for potential Plan C, D, and E on top of our already the plan that we've been working on right along for the last many years. On top of our already, the plan that we've been working on right along for the last many years. So, and how did we get there? Well, we worked with our town planner. We reviewed every one of the thirty-seven properties that we had previously presented back in the August, I think it was two thousand twenty or two thousand nineteen meeting. We asked him to look for any new properties that, that, you know, were available in town or that at least met the criteria. And then we, we also worked with some resources from Chatham Health, our local health department. We had contact with several divisions of the DEEP. And one thing all these communications ended up with, and some of the information that we, we gleaned from these conversations is that the current activities clearly pointed out that there is no perfect or there is no ideal location in the town of Hebron, Connecticut for, for many reasons. So we needed to put together criteria. And as you recall, in many of, many of the discussions that have been had in the past with both the Building Committee, and I know you've had with some of the design professionals, there were all sorts of limiting factors. Power, water, sewer, traffic, many things like that. Well, our, our criteria was one. We had received information from our engineer that based on the facilities that we needed to build, that we needed an area of approximately five and a half acres. That was our criteria. We avoided, or we, we ruled out and did not consider if these properties were in an area where there was three-phase power. We did not consider if there was public water or city sewage. All we, all we looked at was could we put the necessary structures on the piece of property? And could they be contiguous? And was the location flat enough where we weren't going to spend enormous costs on leveling a pad in order to, to build these things? So, as I said, over the, the past week, we, the past six weeks, we looked at thirty locations, thirty-seven locations that we had already reviewed. Nothing's changed there. The, the reality with most of those properties is they're wet. And in a minute, I'm going to just graphically show you how we, what we determined when we looked at that. According to our, to Matt, there are really new, no new or additional areas that had that five and a half acre open space that was contiguous and could be built on. And that was a key that all, all structures needed to fit on there. Now, when I say all structures, I'm talking about the garage, the salt shed, the exterior or outside place, or outside storage facilities, and any other infrastructure that needed to accompany those, those facilities. We never, never planned on trying to move the recycling center or the bulky waste to wherever our, our new Department of Public Works would go. We, we did a lot of listening over the last six to nine months. And Donna, if you can share that, that, those two maps that I, I had sent to you on the screen. And we heard a lot of, a lot of issues. And we, very honestly, I got a, I got a lot of education out of this. I, I never knew what GA, what a quality property was, was referring to. And as you can see on the left, this is the same map that Tom had shown you. But I, I kind of tried to outline Hebron so that it could easily be, be compared to the zoning in the wetlands map. You know, just with an overlay. I, I did try, by the way, to overlay all these together, and it just looked like a, a messy blob. So I put them next to each other, and as Tom's already mentioned, the, the Building Committee, the Building Committee, the folks that have been out talking about the issues with, with you know, building on the Horton property, had a valid point. I mean, yep, the regulations say, if at all possible, we should not build on GA property. Well, unfortunately, the entire town, with very few exceptions, is GA. If you combine that with wetlands, and if you look at the map on the right, anything that's orange in color, those little blobs in orange in color throughout the map, those are wetlands. Those are things where it's very difficult to build on, if not impossible. And if not in a position where we couldn't even get a permit to build. And that's what many of our large parcels have. They have wetlands running right through the middle. There's a large parcel on Route eighty-five that many of you have taught, talked about in the past down across from what's the name of the, the restaurant down there?
Gorgeous.
Yeah, yes. And, and that, that'd be a, a great place for it. It's an open field. Right through the middle of it is, is wetlands, and, and water flows there almost all year round. We couldn't get the trucks across there. There's not enough space on either side of the wetlands to place the garage. And that's just one example of, of, of all of the, the parcels we had looked at. So what we did was we came together, and, and as I said, there is no perfect location. We also know that we can't, or that we should try not to build on residential property. Well, if you look at the upper part of the map, which is a light yellow, it's listed as residential one, R1. The lower part is listed as R2. The lower part of the map to the right is R1, and there's just a little bitty section right to the east of, of the center of town that is not residential. Now, we, again, we can build on residential property, but we certainly want to stay away from it if we can. And we know that when we start building, we're currently located on residential property down on, on Old Colchester Road. And we know that that does or could impact some of the abutting property owners. And, and at all costs, we want to try to avoid that. The bottom line is, is that we've come up with some options, which Richard's going to go into in a couple of minutes. And it, it's funny that a lot of the last few conversations have been about public input. In my notes I have, this project will require public input. That's the first thing. Because there's no ideal location, no, no location that's centrally located. That was one criteria that people wanted, that, that is away from everything, so it's not going to bother anybody. Since there's no location like that, we know that there's going to be give and take. And we have to do this in an adult, professional manner. We have to communicate all facts, not feelings. We have to be willing to give and to take and to negotiate and to cooperate. So now, I want to stress that what we put on the table tonight are four concepts. I'm not going to call them four recommendations because they're far, far less than a recommendation. We haven't had the opportunity to get professional input as to could the facility possibly fit there? Are there topographical issues? Are there wetlands in the actual areas? So these are concepts based on space, based on trying to keep them located away from people if we can. One of the incidentals is they're all, yes, they're all on properties that we currently own. And, you know, so just keep in mind, we don't want anybody coming back and say, oh, there goes the Building Committee again, trying to put a piece of, trying to put a, a, a public works facility on a property that's, you know, it's going to sink in five years because it's nothing more than a bunch of shallow springs all around it. We don't know some of that, those issues. So all of these concepts need to have further investigation. We would hope that the Board of Selectmen will take these and gain public input and come back to us and say, let's look at this one, or let's look at that, that one, or let's look at these two. It's not economically feasible to do all the work that had, would have to be done on all four of, of our suggestions. But I think, and we think, the, the, the Building Committee thinks that with public input as to what might be acceptable to the residents of the town, we could then zero in on one or two properties that might be where we want to look. So at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over, our portion of it, over to Richard. Richard's had over forty years' experience with building projects, a lot of municipal ones. For those of you who don't know them, he spent the most of his career as a construction manager, building consultant for a large, major construction company. And he's very well prepared to talk about these sites, at least at a high level today. So, Richard, it's all yours. And thanks for your, are, are there any questions before I, I'm not leaving, but you got it, Richard?
Just one comment. Mal, Mal, very well state, hey, very well stated. I, I, I like the, the part about cooperation, give and take, working together. I think that's the key to this whole thing. The fact that you've identified some alternate properties, I think that offers some variety to people, and I like narrowing it down to a couple so we don't have to spend a ton of money researching each one, like spending two hundred fifty thousand dollars every time a property comes up to get a plan. I, I'd like to have properties identified before we spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars and then eliminate them before we spend the money. Does that seem feasible to you?
Well, and that's exactly where we go, and, and Mark and, and rest of the team. You know, we look to you for your, your direction based on what you're hearing from the public. We are not in place, and we are not going to make decisions as to where we need to do this. We will provide all the facts that we can gather, and if we haven't gathered what you need, you need to tell us what we've left off, and we will go and find them. As I said earlier, or as the question that came up earlier was, do we know if there are any, if there's any salt pollution? And Andy said, well, we haven't, we haven't really checked that out. Well, I've begun to check it out. I spoke to Chatham Health, and they're not aware of any salt pollution from salt storage in the Chatham Health District. And they provided me with a contact up at DEEP who would be the best equipped to talk to that. They, they gave that name to me the Friday before Christmas, and that person was out of the office all last week. So I'm trying to hook up with, with him right now. And, you know, that's information that will be made available as well. You know, we do know of some issues that happened in the past. What we're curious about is exactly what was asked earlier by, by your team. And has, have, have there been any issues with pollution of salt from any currently, or any salt storage facilities constructed to the current standards, maintained to the current standards, and monitored to the current standards? And that's what we're really looking for. So we will follow up with that. I mean, that's part of what we, we also need to come back to. So I hope that answers your question. You got it, Richard?
Good evening. Hopefully everybody can hear me, unlike the last time. At your November seventeenth meeting, the charge from the Board of Selectmen to us was, we needed to think outside the box. And we spent a lot of time, and we are going to, I'm going to present four concepts that based on the professional experience of the Building Committee, we think are reasonably viable. Yes, Mal's right. They need to be vetted up, but they're not things that we grasp that out of thin air. We think that they're very viable and they're workable. And as Mal said, each one of them has its advantages and disadvantages. You know, the first concept, the first concept we came up with was relative to Old Colchester Road. You know, as previously stated by this committee on multiple occasions, it's impossible to construct a totally new facility at Old Colchester Road while Kevin Kelly and his team pursues their day-to-day operation. It is from a construction phasing situation, an impossibility. There is just not enough laydown area to support a construction activity, and there's not enough extra area for, for Kevin to be able to navigate his day-to-day operations. So one of the ideas that we came up with to free some of the real estate down there was to either terminate or relocate the transfer station. That would create and free up a significant amount of real estate to accommodate a new DPW facility and a salt shed. That presents a matter for the Department, for the Board of Selectmen, your board to address. How does the transfer station get addressed? Is it the town affords curbside pickup to the residents? Or do the residents contract directly with, with, with the service? That's, that, that's an option. Under either scenario, the one thing that would remain a constant at the Old Colchester Road site would be, it would be designated to continue to accept bulky waste. The other, second concept we looked at was at Burnt Hill Park. As everybody knows, the plan of development for the park always envisioned that a DPW facility would be relocated to that, to a portion of the park. And very early on, the tenure of this Building Committee in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, there were multiple conceptual plans put together to try and site a full DPW facility up there at Burnt Hill Park. And each one of the scenarios had part of the site either encroaching or on the edge of the wetlands or encroaching or being on the edge of a conservation easement. Under our scenario or concept, concept number two was to relocate one of the playing fields to John Horton property. And as part of that, part of our proposal would be, as part of relocating that playing field to Johnny Horton Boulevard, is also to pay homage to the previous predecessors that tilled and owned the land. I think it'd be important if that, that comes to pass, that we recognize the history of, of that land. By freeing up a playing field and being able to add it on to the existing available land at Burnt Hill Park would afford the construction of a complete DPW facility there. The third concept we came up with, the Lions Fairground. And we're, we're fully aware that the town had previously approached the Lions Club several years ago about the prospect of them providing adequate enough land to cite a DPW on, on their property. At that time, they were not receptive. However, we, we had communications, Mal and myself, with the town to pursue this concept one more time. The other reason why we thought that this, the committee felt that this would be a viable option is that there is a DOT salt shed that is on Route eighty-five, and it was constructed by the DOT about twenty years ago. And it butts the Lions Fairground. And it was constructed and it was maintained with the best management practices and policies in, that were established twenty years ago. And from what we're able to discern from the DOT and the state, there has been no issues as a result of their construction and their operations in the last twenty years. The third concept that we talked about and we came up with was constructing a new Department of Public Works. The third concept that we talked about and we came up with was constructing a new Department of Public Works facility on John Horton Boulevard. With the one exception of not locating the salt shed, they're finding an alternative location for the salt shed. All the other things that would still be up there would be associated support facilities with again with the salt shed being relocated somewhere else. And concept number five is what it was previously presented to the Board of Selectmen, and that was constructing the entire Department of Public Works facility on John Horton Boulevard. Including the salt shed. Uh, again, we think each one of those are viable options. Each one of them has their advantages, each one of them has their disadvantages. And as Mel said, for us to continue, we really not only need to know what the Board of Selectmen feel is the most viable option, but more importantly. Really need to get the input from town residents on what what they what they would want the peace P B C to pursue. And Mel and myself are available to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Uh, team? Uh, well, somebody's speaking. Um, actually, it's very similar to uh. Some some suggestions or ideas that I had put out that I think went out to all the board members. Uh, one of the things I did have, I believe, was a was a lot. A lot more of the um if this site is selected. These would would be some of the issues that would have to be considered. Um, and. Uh, literally, we're we're pretty much right on the same ballpark all the way down. But as I say, I think it's important, you know, as as these get written up and put out to to uh the townspeople. That they know just what they're looking at. And in fact, I got an email today. I had Andy check on what the um. The uh pickup rates are for uh from, well, it used to be Willie Waste. Uh, whether it be at home pickup or town uh pickup, so how that would affect. Uh, you know, people's wallets or or their taxes. Um, it's also, I feel important to note that any of the sites that are not in a in a sewer area. Are going to be subject to in-ground tanks for uh any and all wastewater collection. From any type of vehicle washing or or any of that. Um, and in the winter time, those tanks could be potentially pumped uh two or three times a week. And I'm not sure what the cost of that pumping is, but that would be something that would have to be incorporated into the operating budget. Of a facility. So maybe less expensive on the outset, but over time, the cost. Is going to is going to continue to uh be an an ongoing thing. So um. I just think it's it's important that people understand that, you know, if they were to build at a an alternate. Location, what? The results were going to be. Um, again, talking Bird Hill Park, if you relocate. You know, a playing field or a couple of playing fields, um, what's the cost of field construction? I don't know. Um, but I think that that would play into the overall cost of the project.
Yeah, Peter.
Oh, I didn't know if you were done yet, Dan.
Yeah, I am. I'm I am. Thank you.
Hey, it's it's getting late. I I want to say one thing now. That was a great presentation by both of you. Thank you. They seem like very good um alternatives to what we've come up with and offer variety. Um, I think it's time that we follow through and get the public's input. Uh, to what direction we're going to take, and I know we're going to have to spend some money to do that, but um. You guys have done everything that you've been asked to do. Um, and I I think it's time to move forward and and see which concept we're going to pick. That's my feeling.
Thanks, Mark.
Uh, Peter?
Yeah, just echo two things, just echo Mark's comments. I mean, you guys really do a terrific job, and you've done a terrific job for a long time, and we're very fortunate to have you. And and you took our charge seriously in this particular next step and got creative, and I I really want to applaud you for your efforts. And uh your thoughtfulness as you put this forward. And again, I think the town doesn't always quite appreciate the some of the talent that we have. Uh, so close to home, that makes us a better a better community. So thank you for for your efforts and and your continued efforts. I um, I had sort of a thought, uh, just my my second piece to this uh is that I think. That the board uh should narrow down uh these concepts, because I think. Um, one of our charges is to try to give uh options, but I think. You know, having two or three options, I heard, you know, obviously vetting all of them out is difficult. I think uh, because I wouldn't want to get, as an example, I wouldn't want to get the public's opinion that we should go to Lions Fairground and find out that they're not willing to sell us the property, you know, as an example. So I think that the board should spend some time um looking at these suggestions, talking about them in the next meeting to really think about. Are there uh some, is it makes sense to focus on two or three uh or two more? So now we have three options. So we're going to the public with some variety. Um, as any, if I just may continue that thought just for another couple of minutes. So the idea of um, do you want to disrupt? Uh, this is for dialogue, you know, these are just the thoughts I would have for the next meeting. Do we want to disrupt our current park? Okay, I mean, we should talk through that. That's a disruption. We've got fields, and even though, you know, that's going to, there's traffic issues, there's all sorts of other things that we have to sort of think about that may impact that part of town. Um, so is that something that we want to do? Um, is like, can we get an answer on on the Lions was uh being receptive to this concept they weren't before, as Richard said, but. Could we get an answer to that pretty quickly to see if this is even still viable? Again, before we bring it to the public. Uh, and then the idea of the creativity, which I really appreciate, is um giving the public a chance to sort of, do you want to? Sort of split up the idea, incur some more costs with trash pickup, sort of disrupt the current situation. So though that might need public input. Relocating a salt at a different location, that's interesting. Um, but I think as a board, we should try to get this to a couple of solutions in addition to the one we have at most. Otherwise, it becomes sort of a very difficult project, I think, and we'll be talking about it once and once in a while before we even are at a position to get public input. So that's my thought. Thank you.
The point. Uh, Peter, that was that was well stated, and uh I think that should be our course of action, uh, if Tiffany and Dan agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think too, um. I think it's a conversation we could probably have more in depth, obviously, at our next meeting, you know, and being mindful of time, but. You know, I just want to thank the Building Committee because I think that. What people don't understand is that you all are volunteers, you know, you care about this town, you do a lot of work. Um, a lot of work that a lot of people don't see behind the scenes. Um, and I do think that at times you've been subject to attacks that I don't think are warranted and that I don't think are appropriate. And so I want to go on the record as saying that um that. We all need at this point to come together and come up with a viable solution where each side is going to give and take, as as Mel so well said. Um, and I just really appreciate the work that your whole committee does. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Um, Mel?
Well, I I think my final comment is is that we're. I hate to say it, but we're kind of excited that uh this is this is some new territory. And we can't, we can't stress enough that we need to do this along with with public input. I mean, I think your conversation earlier about a survey, I think that's a that's a great option. I think your your conversation just now about, well, maybe we don't put all four of them out there. That that works too. Um, whatever you do, we want to be an integral part of this in terms of providing whatever information you need. So please keep us uh keep us in the loop, and as we uncover new information, we will uh we will provide it uh to you. Thank you. Thanks for listening tonight. Thank you.
Uh, then again, thank you guys. Uh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peter.
I'm sorry. Well, I'll just finish my thought. So maybe the the next agenda and maybe back, well, Mel and Richard are still in line. Maybe we um, so they know that we're going to talk about, maybe the focus rather than a broader update is to focus on this document only. Um, so rather than go through a lot of other things that are distracting, let's just spend time talking about these options. And see if we can put a little direction and clarity, and that's it. Uh, in terms of the building and the, you know, we talk about this project every meeting, but let's focus just on this and not ask anyone to do anything else. Um, I think would probably be good. So if we, my suggestion would be, could we put that on the agenda and have it be specific to this? So obviously, if Mel and Richard wanted to join us next time, if that helps. Uh, but um, I I I think that would be a good idea and not really get distracted with a lot of other things uh at the next meeting.
The only thing you want, you may want to keep in mind, Pete, and I think Tiffany mentioned it. Is that you probably do want to start getting a committee together because that's not something uh that happens overnight. I know uh when you guys try to go out and put together a uh a charter revision team. Takes months. I'm not saying it's going to take months. I think there are enough people that are interested in this, but. But I'd uh i- if you could do that parallel, and it doesn't be, it need to be even be part of the part of a meeting. Um, but I would, I would uh keep doing that in the background too.
Yeah, Mel, I think you're right, and I sort of I I see that developing because Tiffany's asked for a follow up question associated with the PR firm. We're going to get a proposal. We, and if that if that if that comes together, then that would be a natural next step to getting the the help may need, and then assuming we approve it. To uh put that committee together. So I think that's a good suggestion, and I think um uh I would want to see Tiffany's question answered and us to decide if we're going to move forward with that. As sort of, because that would be a foundational element if we choose to go forward with it. You know, for the development of the community. So I think that's a good thought, but I think we could probably think about that in conjunction with assessing using um someone like Todd or or a firm like that, if we choose to do that. So good suggestion, Mel. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll put this on on for uh our next meeting's discussion and again invite Richard and Mel. Uh, for their input as well into this. And of course, Andy and so, okay. Moving along.
Okay, next, I believe, is uh any other old business?
Think we have any? Okay.
Rams Rams Strategic Plan Committee. This is an email from Colin McNamara, Rams Superintendent, requesting a member of the Board of Selectmen consider serving on the Rams Strategic Planning Committee. The Select should consider delegating a member of the board to serve.
I know I was on it last time. Um, and if the board desires, I would be willing to do it again. It's it's whatever everybody wants.
Um, you know, I'm interested as well, but I'm happy to defer to you, Dan.
I'm not interested. There are so many other things to do that uh if you guys want to do it, be my guest. If you want to.
Would you um, could you ask Colin if if he would accept two?
Yeah.
That's a really good idea.
Sure, I'm sorry. I I don't know if he just wanted one. It maybe very well could be two. We can ask.
Why don't we ask, and then we can come back and talk about it some more, but if you both have a voice on it, you know, great. And then if one can't make a meeting, another makes a meeting. So I I don't know. I mean, I just think it's probably worth asking.
Keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Perfect.
Next up, in convenience of time, nine D, it's that time of year, believe it or not, uh charter revision discussion. The town charter requires there'd be a review of the charter every five years. If the segment we wish to begin discussions on how to proceed with review or potential establish. A charter revision commission, a charter revision would be voted upon at the November two thousand and twenty-four election if we decided to go through with that. Following is the charter reference and a link to the state statutes governing charter revision. Uh, review and amendment of charter. The Board of Selectmen shall review the several provisions of this charter. From time to time, as it deemed such review to be in the best interest of the town. But at least once every five years, said review to be filed with town clerk, who should publish notice receipt of said report. Amendments to the charter shall be in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter ninety-nine, as the same may be from time to time amended. So that's something that we can keep on the agenda, and you guys think about if you want to establish another committee, which. I would probably suggest you do, and then let the committee decide whether they come back to a recommendation of open that up or or to not.
Yep. Um, what I was going to say on that, I would recommend uh that we do start the discussions, that we keep it on our agenda. Um, I would also ask Donna to do the um. Process going backwards. She's done it in the past, tells us, you know, literally. At what point we have to do certain things going backwards, so that that lets us know how much time we have to actually advertise for members for the committee. Get them established, voted in, and have them start their business. Um, because it it the that clock, the clock does tick pretty quick.
Yep, we'll we'll put the timeframe together.
Okay. Our next would be what the Police Department accreditation?
Yes, the nine C Selectman Rivera will provide the board with a brief update. At the State of Connecticut, it's time for Police Department accreditation. Following the link will provide details from the State of Connecticut's website.
All right, guys, it's getting late. I'm I'm just going to give you something real quickly. Maybe we could put this on the next agenda. Um, the Police Accountability uh Act has required that every police department in the State of Connecticut become accredited. It's a three-phase process um to be completed by twenty-six. Uh, the first phase, every department has a different date. Ours is June fourth. I started working on it two weeks ago. And um I'm going to have to hustle to get this done. I didn't really volunteer for this, but the state has me listed as the training officer. So I've kind of become the accreditation manager. Every town police department has to have an accreditation manager. Uh, I have to go to courses to get that accreditation. Uh, I start that next week. Uh, that that's not a big bill, like six hundred and fifty dollars, but each phase uh has a certain price tag to it. The first one is somewhere between twenty and twenty-five grand. Uh, the next two are even a little more. Um, I'll start out as the accreditation manager, get this going. Um. Departments have appointed guys full time to do this. We, everyone is using at least forty towns that I've contacted or in in um. In communication with have uh found a law enforcement uh law firm that will help us with the accreditation process. Um, I've gotten in contact with them. I've gotten their proposal, spoken to other towns. It will require us getting a hundred and twenty policies uh created. And then we have to apply them to how our officers work and have a a uh. A response to how they work in a form to report to the state. This is a long process. Um, and an in detail, in detailed process. Um, it'll probably require twenty to twenty-five hours a week of my time, at least for the first six months. That's not that crazy, guys, because now I'm only kind of filling in to help out with patrol duties. I've been doing training and administration. Um, I'm going to have to up that a little bit. Uh, but that's where we're at for the six months. We only need to talk about that right now. We can worry about the the following years after that. But we we need to get going. Our first onsite visit is in May. Um, so I'm not saying we have a lot of work to do. I have a lot of work to do. I I'm I'm willing to do it. Um, I think I'm the only one here that wants to do it. The state trooper can't do it. It has to be somebody employed by the town of Hebron. Uh, other towns that don't have a police officer that wants to do it is trying to find a retired lieutenant. You have to have somebody with administrative experience, so I'm a retired lieutenant, but I also have the experience here, so I'm kind of the guy to do it. Um. I I don't know what another alternative is unless we go out and try to find somebody. So I'm kind of volunteering to do it, and we could talk about the funds and passing them and what that entails at a different meeting. Um, I don't I don't want to take any more time. I don't, I don't want to take any more time, guys. We've been here a long time. So if we have a couple of quick questions tonight, fine, and then we could talk about the rest of it at another meeting.
My only question, and again, it's, it's just, here we are, another state mandated unfunded mandate jammed down the towns' throats and towns that can least afford it are the ones that are going to have to cough up the same amount of cash as people that have people that literally can, you know, do that as part of their daily functions. I think it's extremely important that we get some sort of dollar amounts so we can verify how we can get this funding. You know, whether or not we can go with the ARPA funds. We need to get that information as soon as possible, just so we know how to, how to approach the budget. Sadly, I think this is going to be an extremely expensive budget year. There's going to be a lot of personnel issues on a lot of different fronts and we're going to need every, every dollar help that we can get. Thank you for doing this. I can only imagine the type of monumental work it's going to be.
Well, thanks, Dan. The first phase is going to come into this budget because we have to have it done by, before the end of the fiscal year. And I'm thinking we could get away with about 25 grand right now, but I have the proposal. I just got it this morning. I'll have it for you guys at the next meeting. And we can go from there and then we could talk about future years. Because he, there's a, there, there's something you have to do each year in the next three years. Unfortunately, in our first year here, we only have, you know, like five months to go before we have to be ready. So let's get this first phase done and then we can take a little more time, Dan.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Monetarily, I don't know if it's, if it was budgeted in our current budget, so we're either going to have to go for a supplemental, which is something that if we do, I'm not sure what the timeframe is. Andy could answer that. You know, to make sure we have the funds in place.
Yeah, absolutely. Otherwise, we get put on notice in probation until we complete what we have to do and we could lose our certification as a police department and every, every other town is complaining, just like you are, Dan, that this isn't fair and it kind of isn't fair. I understand the intent of the act that it's to improve policing and make it more fair and inherently it probably will over time, but it's, it's quite a burden. And it is kind of, the, the amount is commensurate with the size of your department. So the bigger department, the more you have to spend. So who are in the lower end? Thank goodness. But it, it's, it's a burden on everybody. You're right about that, Dan.
Well, as I say, Andy? Are you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, there's, there's several ways we could fund this. Seeing it's a mandate, we can go to the Board of Finance and we can just add it to a line if it's not approved by ARPA or if it doesn't get voted in by you guys by ARPA. And, you know, it's a mandate. We have to comply. We can, you know, put it to a budget line with finance approval and look to make it up at the end of the year with hopefully, you know, some, a mild winter so far. If not, we'll have to go for supplemental.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I think we need to roll under just sooner than later. Just so that everything is in place before it gets buried or we get tied up in the budgets or whatever. So, okay, great.
And Dan, we have money in our training budget to train me to be the, the accreditation manager. So that we don't have to worry about. You know, I kind of decided as the training officer, what training is required by the state and what we need and allocate it based on what's most important. So I'll just get going with that and we'll wait for the other part until, until I bring you the proposal next week.
Yeah, as I say, I just, I just want to get it in sooner than later, just so we can try to at least get the funding mechanism handled, done.
Gotcha.
You know, just one less thing you have to worry about on the plate.
Gotcha.
Okay. The draft agenda. Oh, come on, papers. That's spread out beyond my arm reach. Yeah. Again, we've added or we've kept on a couple of items for next time. If there's any other additions or whatever, just get into the office so that that can get noted accordingly. Is there any other new business? Okay, hearing none. Our consent agenda, and these are items that are considered routine in nature, which may be voted on individually or maybe voted on as a group. Any member who wishes to discuss a particular item in the section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and approval if necessary. We have the minutes of November 17th, December 1st and December 15th. I took a quick perusal. I, I didn't see anything glaring. I don't know if anybody else did or not. And then we have our tax refunds as listed. So with that, if nobody has anything to, to address, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And it would be the approval of the minutes of November 17th, 2022, December 1st, 2022, and December 15th, 2022. And then the tax refunds as listed. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. So that's set and done. Our next would be our liaison reports. Mark, you have anything?
I don't have anything. I, I just want to say, great job tonight, guys, everybody. It was a very productive meeting, I thought. And I, I, I'm honored to serve with all you guys and proud of the way we conduct ourselves. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. There's times you just want to, you really chew your lip, I'll say. Tiffany?
You know, with the holidays, I don't have anything either, but I echo Mark's thoughts, so thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, at the instant time, nothing, nothing from me, the, the significance, so I'll pass. Thank you.
I have nothing. Andy?
Pretty much reported underneath the town manager's report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We will not have the anticipated executive session because again, Gail being out. And my best wishes go out to her. She was planning on attending. She just couldn't do it. So, public comment? Okay, Kevin?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all. I'll try to keep this brief and I definitely appreciate all the hard work that you did tonight. A couple of things I'd like to bring up, you know, as you, as we move forward. I think the three to five comment, concepts put forward by the Public Building Committee are appropriate. I don't think limiting those concepts and kind of hiding those from public view would be appropriate. I think the public can handle five comments and five concepts. And three is not, you know, between going down to three is going to be just not that effective. I also have a question about testing the groundwater at the old Colchester Road site. The, I wonder if that has happened and if there is current up-to-date information on that GA quality. Seems to me that having a landfill there and a long-running public works facility there, it would be interesting as this GA water issue came up. The GA, the groundwater quality map that was used tonight does show a large section that's classified as GA, though may not meet current standards. And that's on Old Colchester Road, south of Niles Road, and I believe that's in the area of the public works facility. So I would encourage the Board of Selectmen and I'll make a comment to the Public Building Committee to look into that status of that water because saying that all of Hebron has GA water is not actually accurate. As far as salt contamination from salt shed facilities on December 1st, if you go back to your agenda, I did provide this committee with a report from the Board of Selectmen meeting in Woodstock, Connecticut in 2018 that we're dealing with a significant road salt contamination that came out of a state-run salt storage and distribution facility there. So that is an important issue that I would like the committee to consider and to be part of this public debate. And once again, I would also like to investigate the possibility of serving on the committee for the survey. Although I do have some questions whether it's appropriate to have the publicity firm that's creating publicity also work on a survey. But I can defer to that and hope that it'll be a professionally-run system that will be, use neutral language that will be effective at getting the proper results. Several surveys actually do exist already. In January 2022, the Affordable Housing Survey reported the number one characteristics for people, why they moved to Hebron is the rural characteristics. And in 2020, the racial justice survey for Hebron, the number one reason of why people are in Hebron, 78% report the rural setting and to be close to nature. So I think keeping a central location like the Kenny Road property, rural and available for people to use as open space is important and in, in keeping with surveys that already exist. Thank you.
Next public comment is from Gabe. Gabe, if you could introduce yourself and your last name and your address.
Oh, thank you. This is Gabriel Ackerman, 138 Mill Street Road. First, I wanted to thank the Building, Public Building Committee and the Board of Selectmen for having presented those five concept reviews based on the hearings. That was, I think those were well done, really good presentation. And I look forward to hearing what next steps will be. So I appreciate that. These are, the following I do. Also, secondly, I didn't realize the amount of work that went into the police accreditation. So Mark, Selectman Mark Rivera, thank you for putting those efforts in there. For going to that. With regards to the Department of Public Works Facility, I had three questions that I could post in the comments field so that it could be added to public comment. But along with the overall S. Costas Smith for the proposal, DPW facility plan for 17 Kenny Road, I'd like to request to have a estimate for the average cost or increase per resident due to the impacts of the proposed DPW facility if the proposal were to be approved at a town referendum. I'm just trying to understand the cost per resident if that was introduced as a go-forward plan. In regards to the town budget and with respect to the DPW design and engineering service cost estimate, how does a town plan to fund for this expense? I think we heard around $245,000 would be the expense. I'd like to know the impacts on the town budget, if that is something that would, could be added to the agenda. I'm not sure if public comment is an opportunity to offer that, but that is a request. And during the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I believe, Selectman Mark Rivera suggested it would be reasonable to consider including an estimate to install town water for residents of Kenny Road, Mill Street Road and Church Street in the overall DPW proposal planned for 17 Road, 17 Kenny Road. This suggestion was in response to alleviating residents' concerns, valid concerns of contamination of the area resident water supply due to the storage of DIC agents and storage and truck washing bay. I, I'd just like to understand where we stand with that request, if that is still something being considered. And so, so thank you for listening to my request and don't put in the efforts here tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Thank you all. Have a safe weekend and we'll be back.
Excuse me, excuse me, Dan, I'm sorry. There's one more comment, public comment from Mel Lecter.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for the opportunity. I just want to clarify some comments that were made by Kevin Tullamery. If you go back and listen to my comment on GA property, I said almost all the property in Hebron is GA. And the exception, as he disclosed, is down by the current Department of Public Works. The other statement he made about the salt contamination, we are aware of, but it was not, if you go back and listen to my, my comment, what we were looking for were salt contamination issues from salt sheds that were constructed to the current standard. That one was not constructed to the current standard. Absolutely true that there was pollution that came from there, not disputing that at all. But our question and our research is currently constructed to current standard, maintained of current maintenance plans as well as monitored to the current. Are there any pollution coming from those facilities? So that's all I have to say and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, with that, good night, God bless. Thank you all. And it was a long night, but profitable night.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, 1009, Peter Casper.